Good morning and welcome to the District of Squamish Committee, the whole meeting. For Tuesday, January 24th, I just, I see my video isn't launched. There we go. Okay. My name is councillor John French, and I am the acting mayor for the month of January. And as the acting mayor, I get the privilege of chairing committee of the whole meetings. So I will be chairing this morning's meeting. Our first item is welcome to the traditional territory of the Squamish people. And item number two is the adoption of the amended agenda. Council, can I get a motion moved by councillor Stoner, seconded by councillor Hamilton? All those in favor? Are there any opposed? Motion carries unanimous? And we have a delegation this morning, a full table of guests. And I would like to welcome the folks from Fortis B.C. and Wood Fiber liquefied natural gas. And I will turn it over to the team from Fortis to take it from here. Introduce yourselves and then go ahead with your presentation, please.
Great. Good morning, and thank you for having us. My name's Vanessa Connolly. I'm the Director of Community and Indigenous Relations for Fortis B.C. And I'm joined by my colleague here, Darren Marshall, Project Director for the Eagle Mountain to Wood Fiber Gas Pipeline Project. Oh, perfect. Thank you. So we're really pleased to join you here this morning and present about our EGP project. And I just want to acknowledge it'll be constructed on the traditional unceded territory of the Squamish, Tsleil-Waututh, Musqueam, and Coquitlam peoples. So today for our presentation, we want to provide a brief overview on the Eagle Mountain Project and use the majority of our time to speak about our plans for 2023. We acknowledge there's some new members on council, so congratulations to you folks. And we'll start with a bit of background on the project. And of course, are happy to continue to provide further background following our session today. So during today's discussion, we're going to summarize some of our community engagement efforts, speak about our 2023 project timeline and activities. We'll talk about our workforce accommodation plan and community services and infrastructure management mitigations, and our joint coordination efforts with the folks at Wood Fiber who are here as well. And happy to answer any questions you have and look forward to the discussion component of today. So for starters, maybe I'll just quickly introduce Fortis B.C. For folks not familiar with us, Fortis B.C. is an energy delivery company. We deliver natural gas, electricity, and renewable energy to 1.1 million homes and businesses across British Columbia. We serve 135 municipalities and 58 First Nations. And in Squamish, we've been serving gas to Squamish since the early 90s, and we serve 5,500 homes and businesses in District of Squamish. We're committed to reconciliation with Indigenous peoples, and we're guided by our corporate statement of Indigenous principles, which we developed 20 years ago. Onto the Eagle Mountain Pipeline Project, a quick overview for you. So the Eagle Mountain Pipeline Project expands our existing natural gas transmission system to transport gas to the Wood Fiber LNG facility. Project includes 47 kilometers of new gas pipeline north of Coquitlam to Squamish, as well as three kilometers of new gas pipeline to winning existing infrastructure in Coquitlam. It includes a new compressor station at the Wood Fiber LNG site, a nine-kilometer tunnel under the Squamish estuary to limit environmental impacts, and a temporary workforce lodge to house workers and a construction lay-down yard, both of which we've recently submitted temporary use permit applications for. The majority of our new gas line will run alongside our existing right-of-way in order to minimize environmental impacts. The project has completed an environmental assessment for the B.C. Environmental Assessment Office and received approval from the EAO in 2016. And in addition, the Squamish Nation conducted an independent environmental assessment of the project, establishing the Squamish Nation Environmental Assessment Agreement between Fortis B.C. and the Squamish Nation. In 2020, we received approval of amendments to our environmental assessment application certificate, which includes a new location for the Squamish compressor station at the Wood Fiber site, based on feedback that we had from the community, rerouting an eight-kilometer section of the new gas pipeline in Stowamis Valley to minimize impacts, increasing the size of two compressor units at Eagle Mountain Compressor Station, and accommodating this expansion within its existing footprint. And as well, constructing an additional three-kilometer section of gas pipeline adjacent to the existing line near Eagle Mountain Compressor Station in Coquitlam to increase reliability of supply. We've been engaging the local community on the Eagle Mountain Pipeline Project since 2013, which has included open houses, stakeholder meetings, ongoing engagement with the District of Squamish and local Indigenous communities. In 2019, we established a community table and invited representatives from Indigenous nations and Squamish-based organizations that are engaged in security, health, hospitality, economic development, and governance areas of the community to help inform our project planning, in particular around our workforce accommodation plan and socioeconomic impacts in Squamish. Some of the feedback that we've received has helped to shape the project over the years, which has included relocating the compressor station away from originally downtown and then from Mount Mulligan over to the Wood Fiber site, as well as constructing a nine-kilometer tunnel underneath the Squamish estuary to limit environmental impacts. Most recently, as we acknowledge here on the slide, we facilitated an engagement period between November and December of 2022, which focused on the Community Services and Infrastructure Management Plan and the Traffic Control Management Plan. This included hosting an open house on November 23rd, which we'd advertised in the local paper and on social media, and distributed about 7,000 cards throughout Squamish to different neighborhoods and invited folks to participate. We also had a number of stakeholder meetings during that engagement period. So some of the key themes of what we heard during that session are highlighted here, including interest in environmental mitigations, economic opportunities, questions about our workforce accommodation plan and pipeline safety. Specifically, we heard people were interested in understanding how we'd mitigate noise and dust during construction, as well as impacts to recreational trails, impacts to local health and medical services. On the economic side, there was an interest in opportunities to work on the project or contribute to the project. And we also had questions about workforce accommodation as it relates to community safety. As well, we have a team of Community and Indigenous Relations representatives. We used our project website. We have a project phone line. I encourage folks to submit their feedback either directly to us or through our website. And next up for our community engagement, we expect to have some sessions in March related to our two temporary use permit applications to continue that conversation with the community.
Thank you, Vanessa. I'm here today to provide a little bit more of an overview of the project timelines and some more information related to our lodge. First, related to our project schedule, we anticipate construction to occur between 2023 and 2026. Start of construction at this point in time is anticipated to start end of February or early March. It's really associated with some clearing work at the Wood Fiber site in order to facilitate some early works. So it's a fairly modest start. For our regulatory and permitting approvals, we anticipate notifications will go out to local stakeholders and Indigenous communities in advance. In parallel with this construction, we're going to continue to advance a number of regulatory and permitting undertakings. April of 2022, we submitted to the Environmental Assessment Office and the Squamish Nation, who are both our environmental regulators, a Second Amendment application, which is related to our workforce lodge, and that's to increase the size from two hectares to seven hectares. And we anticipate a decision from our regulators later in the first quarter. So we'll continue to advance that application. In parallel with that, we've been advancing our temporary use permit with the District of Squamish. In December, we submitted our temporary use application to the district for both the lodge and the lay-down. And based on what we've heard to date, we anticipate a decision related to those applications sometime in April and May. Next slide, please. As I mentioned, 2023 will bring start of construction. Fairly modest start at the Wood Fiber site, and that's associated with the tunnel. So we'll be doing some clearing works there. Assuming we get our favorable decision related to our temporary use permit for our lodge and our lay-down, we anticipate clearing activities to occur for those sites in the April or May time period, which would allow us later in the year, about November, to establish the workforce lodge. So really, 2023 is about establishing the lodge, the lay-down, the tunnel sites, and completing clearing activities in the valley, as well as establishing roads. A little bit about our workforce timing. Now, these numbers are subject to change, but it's the best information that we have to date. So with activities commencing prior to lodge opening, there will be a period of time where workers will be living in the community. We understand there's interest in minimizing the number of workers, which is why we're so eager to have the lodge in service. We anticipate a peak of approximately 300 non-local workers in the community, approximately late summer, early fall. This includes approximately 120 for our tunnel construction and 150 for our mainline pipeline. Currently, our tunnel workers have arranged local hotel accommodation at the Mountain Retreat Hotel, and our pipeline contractor is eagerly seeking accommodations as well. Over the course of the project, we anticipate our workforce to peak at around 600. And this will occur in approximately 2025. However, the average construction workforce will be approximately 360. And the reason for that is just given the seasonal nature of construction within the valley. A little bit about our workforce lodge. In 2019, we began to consult the community and others on our accommodation strategy. And what we heard is that what we are approved for, which is a two-hectare lodge for 150, 250 people with the remainder being housed in the community, that there was a preference, rather than that, there was a preference to have everyone housed in a single lodge. After engaging our contractors and potential temporary workforce accommodation contractors, what we established is that there was a need for a larger site, so two hectares was insufficient. So that is really what drove our amendment application through the EAO and through Squamish Nation. Additional concerns were related to community impacts, particularly around health services. There was concerns around traffic as well. And so our actions to date have really been looking at ways of mitigating those impacts within the community. What we're proposing to date is a site located in East Squamish, owned by Lafarge. It's a previously cleared site, sufficient in size. It's located in a location where it's easily accessible to our proposed work sites. So it'll allow us to mitigate traffic impacts within the community. We understand there's a need to mitigate potential impacts within the community. To that end, we've developed a Community Services and Infrastructure Management Plan, a Traffic Control Management Plan, which we've submitted to the EAO and Squamish Nation in 2022. Both of these plans, sorry. In addition, sorry, we've also initiated a Fortis B.C. Wood Fiber and a District of Squamish Technical Working Group, intention of which is to meet regularly to review construction impacts on community services with the intention of adaptive management. So those that aren't familiar with our condition management plans through our environmental assessment certificate, we have an overarching philosophy of adaptive management. Where mitigation measures aren't working as anticipated or ineffective, we seek to improve our mitigation measures in order to reduce the impacts. In addition, we continue to advance our Terms of Reference and Construction Protocol Agreement with the District of Squamish. These documents include permitting processes, construction expectations, such as pre- and post-road assessments. Within the Terms of Reference, we're also discussing with the staff the opportunity to provide a community benefit contribution, as well as support for public servicing calls. We are also supporting staff by funding a permitting manager and intend to fund a project manager as well. I'll pass it back to Vanessa.
Thanks, Darren. So lastly, we understand the need to jointly coordinate our efforts with Wood Fiber LNG and plan to continue to do that. So I wanted to just highlight a few examples for you today. Darren just touched on establishing a technical working group with the District of Squamish and the two organizations. We're also developing a joint communication protocol. This is intended to describe the different roles for each organization as it relates to public communication and responding to inquiries for the project, and just understand the need to ensure that's seamless for folks in the community. So we're working through that protocol and advance the construction start. Health and safety and security, so coordinating our engagement with various public health and safety authorities and our discussions with them. We also assess our respective traffic management strategies to determine that there were minimal cumulative impacts of traffic management impacts from the two projects. Community engagement, so we're coordinating this. We try to coordinate our council presentations and come back-to-back, as well as participate in each other's open houses and have coordinated other stakeholder meetings and so forth. And then lastly, on the local labor side, I know Wood Fiber will speak more about this as well, but looking to find a balance between opportunities to work on the construction on the project, but also understanding the need to minimize the impact of the local labor market from our two projects. So those are just a couple of examples of joint coordination between the two organizations, and you'll hear more from Wood Fiber in a few moments here. And that concludes our presentation. So thank you for the opportunity, and we look forward to your questions.
Great. Thank you. Council, what I'd like to do is spend a few minutes on your questions specifically related to the Fortis B.C. presentation. And I think it would be best for us to keep those questions tight so that we can allow Wood Fiber LNG to do their presentation, and then a longer, likely more robust question period after we hear from Wood Fiber LNG. Councillor Penningill.
Just a clarifying question. I'll maybe come back, depending on the answer later. Just wondering if you can clarify, I missed what you said about the Mountain Retreat Hotel and how that's being used?
Our tunnel contractor Frontier Camper Michael's joint venture has booked the hotel in order to support their workers for the 2023 period.
Okay, I'll come back to that later. Thank you.
Ms. Connolly, I was detecting a little bit of feedback on your microphone. You might solve that by sliding in about five centimeters closer to yourself. Councillor Stoner.
Thank you. Through the chair, thanks for being here today and for the update. I'm just trying to wrap my head around some of the timing here. And a lot of the engagement that we've had around workforce accommodation, you've responded to, and you said that you heard there were concerns about dispersed workers throughout the community. And so as a result, you submitted your EAO application to increase the size of the workforce lodge accommodation. But we are still anticipating almost 350 workers here this summer, who will be dispersed throughout our community. And so what engagement have you done around risks of having people dispersed throughout our community this summer in 2023, given that you don't have an appropriate workforce accommodation?
So we did speak about workforce accommodation plans at our last open house and during our engagement period in November and December. We have heard the concerns about the impact to workers coming into town and staying in hotels and other accommodations. So we understand that that's still a concern. We expect we'll speak more about that with the community as it relates to our upcoming TUP application. But want to just be really clear on the fact that with construction starting, there will be folks in town for the period of time before we receive approval, if we receive approval, and are able to get the lodge up and running. So we acknowledge that there are some concerns with that. And I think we'll continue that conversation about suggestions of how we can address that concern.
Then can you just remind us when you actually identified that you'd need a larger lodge, and a particular site was identified? I'm just trying to understand the timeline as to where you recognized this was going to be needed and why we're only seeing a TUP application now.
The first community table that we held was in 2019. That was where we identified that, or at least the feedback we received, was a desire to have a single site. Following that, at the second community table, we began to establish site selection criteria and really put forward the proposal to have a single site. Leading up to that, obviously, it takes some time to put together a regulatory application. That regulatory application was submitted in April of 2022. And so there was community engagement prior to submitting that, and then also engagement throughout the regulatory application, which is ongoing.
And then, I guess, just finally, one further question, just to clarify. What is the anticipated living-out allowance for folks who will be in our community? So when they're not built, or when they're not being housed, no workers lodge accommodation? I know that you provide living-out allowance, or your contractors do. What is the estimated value of that living-out allowance?
It's currently under development right now. We're trying to establish an appropriate amount.
Councillor Hamilton.
Thank you. Through the chair. The timing, councillor Stoner raised the timing of the TUPs, and we seem to be very squished here in time. And I'd like to ask, what are your plans if the TUP or the lay-down yard does not get approved?
For the lay-down specifically? So we are currently evaluating other options. They're, to be honest, they aren't great. The value proposition of having the lay-down in the lodge in those locations, it's sort of complimentary. It allows us to have workers travel down the Forest Service road to the lay-down and then on to the work site. So the value proposition is really to avoid traffic within town. If the lodge is approved and the lay-down isn't, and we have to find a separate location, then we may... It dilutes that value proposition, if you will. All of a sudden, you may have traffic coming down the Mamquem FSR to a staging area, and then back up into the valley. So we are currently, to answer your question, we are currently looking at options, but the value proposition is diluted significantly.
As a follow-up and just clarity, when you say value proposition, whose value are you proposing? Your own, to the value to Fortis, or the value to the community?
The value to the community, sorry. The intent of staging them in that location is really to mitigate traffic impacts within the Squamish community.
Councillor Penningill.
Yeah, there's been some reference to community engagement, and I just want to sort of clarify what you mean by that. My understanding is, it's been a point of frustration for me, but members of the public are not allowed at the community table. That's for specific invitees only. In the winter, I think there was the November event. It was meant to be two nights. It got cut down to one. As I understand, that was for the CE SMP, the One Management Plan. Read that over the weekend, and it says it must be read in the context of these other plans, which aren't available yet. And that's still today, that's what's up. And as I recall, because I went to the November engagement, that plan that was, I thought the engagement was supposed to be about, wasn't even available there. So, and you know, my recollection is that public engagement before that, it had been quite a while. So I'm wondering, you know, when you're saying community engagement, I guess what I'm interested in, when is the actual public engagement? When has that been, and how do you plan to sort of improve that? Because I think we can all recognize it's been incredibly lacking.
I can start. Yeah, so when we speak about public engagement, we hosted our open house in November. That's correct. We had intended to have a second one, but canceled it due to the snowstorm. So we had one session in November. We also had open house in the spring on the project. We held a public open house in 2021, and we had some virtual sessions during kind of COVID lockdown in 2020. So we have had a number of open-house-style sessions over the last few years on the project. The community table is a group of invited representatives from various service organizations, from the District of Squamish, from the nations, to speak specifically and inform specifically our workforce planning and some of the socioeconomic considerations. So that's been a really good channel for us to get feedback from those organizations. We also meet one-on-one with various groups that ask to meet with us or that we reach out to in the community. And, you know, welcome folks to reach out to us if they have concerns that are specific to them, residents or businesses along the route, et cetera. So we have had direct engagement with them as well. Would expect to have further open houses as we approach construction start, both for the TUP process and then, once construction starts, to ensure we're getting feedback on any concerns that are arising through that time.
I'll endeavor to answer the second part of your question. First thing I'd mention is that our environmental assessment certificate has a number of conditions. As part of those conditions, there is the development of a number of condition management plans. Within that approval, it outlines exactly who is to be consulted on each one of those plans. And there are specific technical advisory committee members that must be engaged on these plans. Public engagement on our Community Services and Infrastructure Management Plan and our Traffic Control Management Plan are actually not required by our regulator. However, based on the feedback that we received from the District of Squamish previously, there was a desire to seek public feedback on those plans. And so we worked with the Environmental Assessment Office to find a way in order to do that. So the public engagement that we undertook in November was really an attempt to undertake that public engagement within the regulatory context in which we operate.
So can I, regardless, and I sort of tend to interpret the certificate a bit differently in terms of the expectations around public engagement. But I guess then, if I understand, I guess if you can clarify, what level of public engagement will there be on these management plans? When will the public have an opportunity to see them? If they say, hey, you have to read this in the context of these other plans, when is the whole set of plans available to the public at a time and a place where they can provide feedback that can be incorporated and adjusted, and they can see how their feedback has been reflected in updated plans? When does that happen?
So we've submitted our condition management plans to the EAO and Squamish Nation. And the EAO, as I understand it, will post those online. As I mentioned, we have an adaptive management philosophy with these condition management plans. So as feedback comes in related to our mitigation measures, if they're ineffective, then we will revisit our mitigation measures to identify potential opportunities. As it relates to our Community Services and Infrastructure Management Plan, I believe once that's posted, we have a structure in place. I believe the community table, as well as other community engagement that Vanessa spoke to earlier, that'll solicit information from the public, and we may revisit our plans using that feedback.
So the feedback that's been received so far, there's no plans at this point to update your community infrastructure management plan and so on at this point, based on that feedback?
Correct. The feedback that we heard through our engagement in the fall, we saw no reason to update that plan at that time.
But there wasn't public engagement really in the fall, in November. Again, like I said, the plan wasn't available at the event. So I'm just wondering when the public engagement was that fed into the first draft?
The plan itself outlines the mitigation measures. And when we went out and did our engagement in the fall, we outlined what those mitigation measures were. So while the plan itself in its entirety wasn't necessarily available, the mitigation measures were identified.
But from what you said, I think the last public engagement was in the spring. And the plan, there's no planning, none of that was available then, and it wasn't available at the November event. So I'm just wondering where the public engagement, not a community table, that's, you know, restricted attendance, but when the public engagement was?
Maybe I'm misunderstanding the question, but the mitigation measures outlined in the Community Services and Infrastructure Management Plan, as well as the Traffic Control Management Plan, were outlined within billboards and information provided to people at our November event.
Thanks, Councillor Penningill. And I'll just remind everybody participating in this conversation, please direct your questions, your answers through the chair. Councillor Greenlaw.
Thanks. Through the chair. I appreciate that you're taking measures to mitigate the impacts of this influx of workers on our community. However, statistically speaking, it's still highly probable that this influx of workers will result in an increase in sexual violence. And there is particular concern around this coming from our First Nations communities. And I wanted to ask, do you have procedures to address issues as they arise? And who will be held accountable for these workers who are in our town? Thanks. Thanks.
Yeah, so I'll just maybe touch on some of the conversations that, or the comments from Darren from earlier. So we have had feedback from local Indigenous nations, as well as a group called Protect Our Indigenous Sisters, and a couple of organizations within the community, service providers, sharing the concerns around community safety and mitigations that we need to have to protect the community. So we have incorporated a lot of this feedback. We do have our worker code of conduct, which all workers on the project are expected to comply with. That does include compliance with all relevant laws in the community. We're also intending to undertake education around sexual harassment, violence, and bullying for our workers. That'll be part of our orientation and onboarding for all of the folks working on the project. Another example is cultural awareness training and ongoing cultural sensitivity. So we intend to include that as part of our programming for folks working on the project and participating and staying in the lodge. We have a number of other different mitigations and training and ongoing support for workers in the lodge that Darren spoke about. We have a no visitor policy, and we'll have 24 hour security onsite at the lodge. And we will have procedures in place for management of the lodge, compliance with lodge rules, and ensuring that folks are meeting all of the requirements of our workforce code of conduct during construction and while at the lodge.
Okay, so again, what will happen when they don't follow the code of conduct? And who will be accountable for them?
Given that these are contractors, by law, we're limited in our ability to discipline workers. However, we will have a strict zero tolerance policy, and we do have the ability to remove them from the project altogether, which we will. So that's the enforcement.
Okay, and then would Fortis then be responsible for the employees and their behavior?
Fortis BC is responsible for our own employees' behavior. However, in terms of our contractors, ultimately, our enforcement is limited by law. It's around removal rather than discipline.
Thank you.
Counselor Stoner.
Thank you, through the chair. Just to pick up on your response, Ms. Connolly, everything you said was with relation to a workforce accommodation lodge. So what happens when these workers are not in a workforce accommodation lodge?
So the workforce code of conduct is required regardless of whether we have the lodge. So that's the behavior that we expect out of workers. And as Darren said, if folks are not in compliance with that, there are different mechanisms for, you know, removal from the project. Any kind of breaking of the law, of course, would be with security services or RCMP to manage that directly. But the orientation that I spoke about would happen for workers before the start of construction. So all of that work is happening anyhow, regardless of the lodge.
Thank you. And through the chair, just one final question. What severance requirements do you have with your contractors if there's ongoing issues? Are you able to just cease that contract and find a new contractor?
I can't speak to the specifics of the contract, given the confidentiality. However, I can assure you that we have the ability to remove our contractor's personnel from site, for whatever reason, and we have the ability to terminate contract. Yes.
Next up, I have Counselor Anderson, and unless Mayor Hurford has anything? Okay, so after Counselor Anderson, I'd like to move on to the Wood Fiber LNG presentation.
Thank you, Chair. I wonder if our guests could speak to current plans for the disposition of spoil from the tunnel excavation?
We continue to work with our Contractor Frontier Camper Michael's joint venture for local opportunities for that spoil. The reuse opportunities are fairly limited at this time.
Great, thank you. So at this point, I'd like to move on to the Wood Fiber LNG presentation. And I believe our staff will assist in bringing up the presentation for Wood Fiber LNG. Ms. Connolly, will you drive the presentation for? Very good. So I'll turn it over to Wood Fiber LNG. Please introduce yourselves.
Thank you. My name is Daria Hasselman, and I am new to the Wood Fiber team. I just joined at the end of November. And I would like to first acknowledge that we are on the traditional lands of the Squamish Nation and peoples. And similar to Vanessa, congratulations to the new mayor and counselors for being on the council. And we'd like to give a project update today to kind of give you a little bit more information, especially for the new counselors. So as you know, Wood Fiber LNG is a LNG facility that is going to be constructed on the former Wood Fiber pulp and paper mill site. Wood Fiber is a Canadian owned company, 70% owned by Pacific Energy, and 30% is owned by Enbridge, but in a non-operation participating partner. LNG, W LNG has our approvals both from the provincial, federal, and the Squamish Nation. And we'll talk a little bit about the Squamish Nation environmental assessment a little bit later. And as you know, most of our EFPC, which is our engineering, our engineering, production, fabrication, and construction contractor is McDermick International. And we expect construction to start later this year in Q4 and be completed in 2027. During operations, our facility will export approximately 2.1 million tons per annum of liquid LNG.
Hi there, thank you for having us today. I'm pleased to be here on Squamish Nation territory. My name is Julia Diamond, and I'm the Senior Manager of Government Relations with Wood Fiber. I've been with the company for about a year and enjoyed getting to know some of you as counselors and working with your staff in the district. I wanted to send regrets on behalf of our President Christine Kennedy and Selena Bassey, both of whom meet regularly with senior staff, but couldn't be here today, unfortunately. I think it's important to recognize that the Wood Fiber plant will be powered by renewable electricity, which is unique in Canada and across the world. And will make our plant 14 times less emitting than traditional plants that are powered by natural gas. We have a commitment to be a net zero facility, and that's why we recently joined the Government of Canada's Net Zero Challenge as a founding company, and you can see our certificate up there. This commits us to developing a tangible strategy for how we will be net zero, and this is in development. And of course, we're continuing to make improvements to the facility to ensure that it's as efficient as possible and emits as few emissions as possible. Within a jurisdiction that places strong value on the environment, Wood Fiber LNG has a key role to play in supplying energy to the world. Russia's unjust invasion of Ukraine and the interruption of gas supply to Europe has illustrated the importance of natural gas and LNG for energy security for years to come. And we think it's a good thing that Canada has a key role to play in providing supply above and beyond other countries that may not have the same strong regard for the environment. The gas that will be supplied to the facility for processing is some of the lowest carbon intensive in the world. And as Daria mentioned, comes from our sister company in Northeast BC, Pacific Cambrium, which has strong sustainability certifications through equitable origin. Thanks. So many of you know that the Wood Fiber LNG project is the first industrial project in Canada to have a non-treaty Indigenous government, in our case, Squamish Nation, as a full project regulator. This means that the nation undertook an independent environmental assessment and issued an environmental certificate for the project. And everything that we do must uphold those conditions throughout the course of the project, similar to Fortis. Our project is subject to 13 unique conditions that must be met during construction and operations, including no project expansion and environmental monitoring provisions, among others. We would be happy to provide more details with council about the role of the nation as a regulator. We have an impact benefit agreement with Squamish Nation that was signed in 2019, and it includes obligations to working with the nation on employment, training, procurement, and other opportunities. Our project has been responsive to what we've heard through consultation with local Indigenous groups. For example, we changed the location of the LNG plant from floating to on land and changed the facility's cooling technology from seawater to air cooling, which has positive impacts on the environment and reduces emissions and positive impacts on the marine territory. We acknowledge the UN declarations on the rights of Indigenous peoples, the truth of reconciliation, commission calls to action, and the national inquiry on missing and murdered Indigenous women and girls, and recommendations made for industrial projects about these inquiries. These are issues that we care about and take very seriously, and we will do what we can to protect culture and gender safety of the community and our workforce. For example, we are delivering cultural competency training to our workforce in partnership with Squamish Nation, and everyone will be required to participate in this training throughout the orientation process for construction.
And as Julia just mentioned, W Wood Fiber LNG is committed to bring benefits to the Squamish Nation as well as to the community through training, employment, and procurement and business opportunities. We are committed to hiring qualified local residents and businesses as much as possible so that we can share the benefit. We expect the workforce to be at peak about 800 and approximately 100 jobs during the operations. So during construction and through operations, Wood Fiber LNG will develop various training and employment initiatives, and will offer training through both construction and operations. Later this year, we intend to host a job fair, also some other engagements. And we expect hiring for the construction to start later this year and last until about 2025.
So the flotelle is not a new subject to many of you, but for those of you who don't know, the flotelle or floating hotel is a fundamental component of our workforce accommodation strategy. It is a temporary contained vessel to house our construction workforce and will be situated adjacent to site away from the community of Squamish. As such, there will be no living out allowance. We chose a flotelle in response to community concerns about potential impacts on community infrastructure and services, particularly housing. And of course, our goal is always to ensure that we are minimizing adverse impacts on the community while maximizing local opportunities. We are currently working with the BC Environmental Assessment Office on an amendment process, which includes providing information back to the province on how we are addressing comments and concerns from the public and the technical advisory committee, of which the district is a member. Over the past couple of years, we undertook comprehensive studies and modeling regarding noise, air quality, human health risks, and alternatives to the flotelle, such as a land-based camp. The flotelle will offer individual rooms and bathrooms to ensure gender inclusion, and kitchen facilities, dining facilities, recreation and lounge facilities, medical services, and 24/7 security. More details will be available once the operator is selected in the coming months. And workers will have limited interface with the community of Squamish. We anticipate to have more information to share soon.
So safety is a top priority for our employees and for the community. And during operations, we expect that an LNG vessel will pass through Houssound every 10 to 12 days. During construction, all materials, equipment, and workers will be transported to and from site by the water. W LNG is required to submit plans to manage, mitigate, and mitigate potential impacts to the marine environment. And we are voluntarily participating in Transport Canada's Turnpool process, and we're developing a marine communications plan to coordinate the use of Houssound and Tommish Harbor with key stakeholders.
I also just wanted to point out that this is an old rendering, and the floating storage tank should be stacked one in front of the other, not side by side. Selina, thanks. So on community engagement, since we last visited council, we have done significant public engagement in the form of an open house and community tables. We've also participated in and had presence at Fortis's engagements. We acknowledge the importance of ensuring all voices and opinions are heard, and that we are being transparent with Squamish about what the project means for the community. Over 100 people attended our open house in October. This did include a group of advocates speaking about safety and environment. These are issues that are important to us, and we will continue to improve ways to ensure that those voices are heard. We have worked with government regulators and the district to identify and engage stakeholders, and this extends beyond stakeholders that are referenced in our environmental certificates, who we must consult on our environmental and socioeconomic management plans, including, similar to Fortis, our community services and infrastructure management plan, our marine transportation plan, our emergency response plan, and our traffic control management plan. We are continuing to update our plans based on feedback from community members and Indigenous groups, and will finalize these in the months ahead. We also addressed the topics within the management plans at our open houses. So we had storyboards created on all of these topics, and the public did have an opportunity to engage on those. Before we finalize our plans, we will do furthering community engagement this quarter and next. And we are in regular contact with district staff about these opportunities, and would be happy to share more information with council as needed. And of course, this is a topic that is monitored and reported through the technical working group that Fortis and Wood Fiber have established with the district. Council will have the opportunity to review our management plans before submission to the EAO, and then we can have a discussion with you about the drafts at that time. Where possible, our plans reference Fortis mitigations in effort to give the reader a better understanding of the combined effects, such as on traffic, and how these will be addressed. Of course, it's a balance of broad engagement and targeted engagement with stakeholders who may have a role to play in implementing some of our mitigations. So we acknowledge those comments from council. And of course, we have community reps in the community that meet regularly with stakeholders one on one, and we are always happy to do that.
And we just want to talk a little bit about what we're giving back to the community. Since 2016, and by the end of this year, Wood Fiber will have given over $600,000 to local community groups made up of the nonprofits. And we'll have two intakes this year of our community partnership program. The first intake opened on January 9th and closes February 10th. And if you, we've been encouraging local groups that have participated before to reach out to us and apply for the grants. And if there's any organizations that you're aware of, please have them go to our website at www.woodfiberlng.com, and we will be happy to look at all the applications and receive them. We've also sponsored a number of events, local events over the years. Certainly, the Squamish Day Lager's Fest. We've done stuff with the Business Improvement Association, the mural walk, the holiday parade, the Squamish Hospital Foundation Golf Tournament, and a number of chamber event sponsorships and the holiday events. We'll continue to have these kind of events, and as Julia mentioned, we'll have some job fairs and other engagements. And we're hoping to have a open house later this spring.
The Wood Fiber LNG project has transformed a historical pulp and paper mill site that operated for about 100 years. And to date, we've spent over $12 million in cleanup and remediation, which includes removing creosol piles and tires, recycling concrete and old rebar, and removing a deep sea wharf and warehouse. We are currently undertaking works to prepare the site for construction, and this includes further remediation work, constructing a new passenger dock, and demolition work. We recently capped the old landfill onsite, which reduces the amount of water that needs to be treated and then discharged back into Houssound. Wood Fiber LNG is undertaking studies and analyses in the event of a natural disaster or threat. We are developing rigorous environmental management plans that are required by our environmental certificates for protecting the natural and marine environments. We are working closely with Squamish Nation and other nations on all of these, and with Squamish Nation on a Houssound marine use plan. All of these plans require consultation, as I mentioned, with Indigenous groups and other stakeholders, and this is ongoing. And includes specific mitigations for how these plans will be updated and the mitigations monitored on an ongoing basis. And then I think it's just worth noting again that our facility will be net zero, which means it will not contribute any net new emissions from the liquefaction process. And we'd be happy to provide more information to council on that. And the last is just an infographic that illustrates the remediation and cleanup activities. It's kind of hard to see there on the screen, but that's all that we have for you today. So again, overall, I think there's been lots of progress, joint progress with Fortis and the district over the past year. Thank you for your time, and we look forward to working with you to ensure this project is providing benefits to your community.
Thanks for the presentation. And first, I have Counselor Stoner, and followed by Mayor Hurford.
Thank you, through the chair. Thank you for the presentation and for being here today. I'm curious what conversations, if any, have happened about having Fortis's workforce on the flotelle and why that wasn't submitted as a joint application for an amendment to the EAO.
So as you are aware, we are trying to work closely as much as we can, but there are two separate projects with two separate regulatory processes and two different schedules. We are responsible for our workforce, and they are responsible for theirs. And again, we will follow all the regulations and the requirements that we can, but we will work together as we can, but they are two separate projects.
I'd also mention, thank you for the question. The portion of Fortis's workforce that will be on the Wood Fiber site is relatively small, and our flotelle is situated adjacent to site to keep workers out of the community. So there would still need to be a transport of workers to the community.
Thank you, but just to follow up, and so I appreciate that they are two separate companies, but Fortis is an energy delivery company. Their project would not exist if it were not for your project. And so you are setting the timelines, and you are setting the capacity availability for this project for Fortis to move ahead. I heard from you, Ms. Diamond, that you take it as a significant responsibility to lessen the impacts of this project in our community. And so I'm curious, one, you'll take responsibility for the cumulative impacts that your decisions are having on our community. We do not have a plan for the workers that are coming in in 2023. Yes, they are being hired by contractors of Fortis, but by a timeline that you have set out. And so what responsibility will you take to make sure that our community is safe, based on the timeline that you are pressing?
So we will work with Fortis to influence and make sure that they are addressing the community impacts. But again, it's a separate project, and we will make sure that our workforce and that they are taking steps to make sure to minimize their workforce with them. But we cannot have the two of them together because they are two separate projects and two different work schedules.
Thank you. Through the chair, one final question. So is there opportunity, if we are not able to find appropriate workforce accommodation for Fortis, is there opportunity to delay construction, or is that timeline being set by you? Why does construction need to start in February of 2023 when there's no plan in place?
The projects will work together to address the community impacts, but the schedules are different, and we will continue to work with the Squamish and certainly through the Technical Working Group with Squamish District, Fortis, and with Wood Fiber to address those concerns.
Sorry, my question is, which company is setting the timeline?
We both are working together to establish those timelines to meet the construction schedules.
Mayor Herford, followed by Counselor Penningill.
Thank you. I guess for our W. LNG folks, we saw some numbers earlier from Fortis. Is there an update on worker numbers, if any, for this coming season?
We would be happy to share that with you.
Okay, is that information available now so we can discuss? I'm trying to, we heard a 3, was it about 3:25, something like that, from Fortis? Is there a number, a rough number you could share with us at this point as to what we should be expecting, specific to your portion of this project for the summer?
For the summer? So currently, we have about 30, between 30 and 40 people working on site. During the early construction, we expect about 100 to 125, most of those being local.
Okay, and when you say, what are you using to define that during the construction? Like, is that this, specific to my question, is that this summer? I'm trying to build this accumulative piece in my mind.
The OGC, the B.C. Oil and Gas, will determine when construction starts. We're currently still in early works and site preparation.
Okay. You're, we heard earlier that there will be an influx of workers on the Fortis portion of this project prior to having the workforce accommodation in place. Do we have a commitment from W. LNG that there will be a plan for the workforce before work commences to avoid this, I'd say undesirable outcome, where we have workers in the community before we have the capacity to house them in the preferred way?
So as I said, most of our workers right now are, I think all of them are local who are on site, and we anticipate about 100 to 125 coming at the start of construction, which will happen later this year. But most of those, if not all of them, will be local or from the lower mainland.
And in cases in which they are not, we do have units rented at Soraco in Squamish, and we're continuing to look at how that feeds in and how that's a mitigation within our Community Services and Infrastructure Management Plan.
Okay, I think it's crucial to understand where those things, or how these things line up as far as the timing and thus usefulness of the flotelle to minimize the impacts of the community, which is your desired, which is the jointly desired outcome. And I don't think that we achieve that in a case where we don't have the accommodation there and ready when the workforce arrives. And that's, so we're looking at 450 total this summer, and I haven't heard that there's a substantive plan around that. And that's challenging for me, just minimize the statement there. I'm curious, the, on the other, on the Wood Fiber site, there's, I believe it's a Fortis responsibility around the compressor station. There's some in your present, in the W. LNG presentation, we heard about changes to the project to minimize the environmental impacts. And my understanding, there's still a compression, compressor station there that is going to be powered by natural gas. When there's quite, it's been very well, it's highlighted in other presentations that there's an abundance of electrical power there. So could someone speak to why that particular piece is as it is and how that goes into the overall project's GHD calculations?
Thank you for the question. We evaluated the use of electric motor-driven compressors at the revised location. You know, as Vanessa mentioned earlier, we had amendment application number one. There was four proposed changes. One of those changes was to relocate the Squamish compressor station, otherwise known as V2, from Mel Mulligan over to the Wood Fiber site. And as part of that analysis, we reviewed the use of electric motor-driven compressors. We did a series of analysis, both with the EAO and Squamish Nation. And what we found was that it didn't provide the desired reliability. However, as part of our commitment, we will be constructing the site in such a way as to facilitate the adoption of electric motor-driven compressors in the future, should it become feasible. So we wanted to ensure that we reduced future barriers to adoption.
Okay. I guess maybe one more, and I will perhaps have more material going forward. But I was curious around the, we hear the Worker Code of Conduct, I think has been given a lot of weight. I've reviewed what I think was in an early draft, and I found it lacking. But I understand that work is ongoing there, so I hope that it comes to a better place. But could you speak to the alignment between the Worker Code of Conduct for workers on the various portions of the overall project? So that specifically would be the, any Worker Code of Conduct work on, from W. LNG and from Fortis, and how that particular piece would be, has been developed jointly or otherwise?
So I can speak to the Worker Code of Conduct for Wood Fiber. Yes, it's under development. And as our colleagues at Wood Fiber said, there are going to be contractors on both projects, and they will have their own HR policies and all union policies and all those kinds of things. But the Worker Code of Conduct will allow Wood Fiber, certainly on our site, and will probably work together on sort of the Fortis site, to remove people from the project. So violations of the Code of Conduct will have consequences, up to being permanently banned from site. So we're not firing you from your contractor, but you will not be allowed to work on the project. And all of the Code of Conduct will be part of our orientation. If people choose not to sign it, that's okay. They just choose not to work on the project.
So my question was specifically around the alignment of the Code of Conduct, the implementation of. I understand, and we've been, we've heard a little bit about that from both sides, and I appreciate that, the alignment. Are we working from the same Code of Conduct?
I don't know if we'll be able to have a same Code of Conduct, but it will have a lot of the same feelings because they are separate projects, and they'll be working with their different contractors, and we'll be working with ours. So we will certainly, through a, we're working on a community feedback process where we'll align so there can be a one sort of window approach for the district, for the community, for anybody, the workers, the general public, to reach out to us, and we'll ensure that we are aligned and making sure that any concerns or questions from either project are addressed in a timely manner.
So there's no formal process between the two entities to align the Worker Code of Conduct?
No, I'm not aware at this time because they are separate projects, and they're separate workers, separate contractors. But we will certainly work together, and a lot of the Worker Code of Conducts will be, have similar content and similar expectations outlining behaviors, attitudes, and safety for on and off the project.
Sorry, I do have one, I have one more, and then I'll concede.
Mr. Marshall looked like he might want to add to that. You're good? Okay, go ahead, Mayor Herford.
Thank you. On the W. LNG site, what is the worker's schedule? Like, as far as are they, are they working, you know, five days, five days a week in general? Is it in for chunks of time and out for chunks of time, and has that been established?
We are, it has not been established yet, but usually it's two weeks on, one week off. And it's two weeks straight, working usually 10-hour days.
And this differs on the Fortis site, is that correct?
That's correct. So we'll have two separate contractors on the Wood Fiber site. There's our tunnel contractor, which has been established as Frontier Camper Michael's joint venture, and they'll be working roughly 10 to 12-hour days. And then the facilities portion, which is the Squamish compressor station, which I discussed earlier, that'll be more of a traditional 10-hour day.
Thank you, Counselor Penningill.
Yeah, I've got lots, so I guess just cut me off when it's time to go to someone else, then come back to me. I'm trying to wrap my head around it. Like, I think we understand that from an EAO, from their regulatory process, these are two separate projects. But from community impacts, they are not. It's one project. And Wood Fiber is the sole beneficiary of the pipeline. And from many previous presentations, it's been said over and over again that Wood Fiber is paying 100% of the cost of the pipeline. So I'm trying to understand what is preventing Wood Fiber from taking responsibility for a lot of these aspects of the Fortis project? Like, what is the obstacle there? Is Fortis refusing to take more money to alleviate some of these things? Are they refusing to accept an extended timeline? Or is Wood Fiber refusing to allow that to address some of these community concerns?
I wouldn't say it's about money. I would go back to the issue of the projects being completely separated and needing to report into their Environmental Assessment Office. We do work closely together. We meet regularly with Fortis at the staff level and the senior management level, and very regularly on a monthly basis with the district to try and tell that story of combined impacts. And we think those conversations have been going well. Also providing an outlook on where are the joint permitting opportunities? Where, what is the outlook for permits that are required by both projects? And how that may impact capacity at the district? And I think it was mentioned that we do have a capacity funding agreement in place with the district. It sounds like Fortis is looking at further capacity improvements, and yeah, that's what I can say on that.
Sorry, but I think you're still unanswered answering the question because I don't understand. And I think you will see from our communications as a district, we have not seen that coordination, and it's not just an issue of communication. We're looking for coordinated planning. So an understanding, we still, after asking for I don't know how many years, can't get a graph of, here's the combined workforce of the two projects. Like, what's stopping you guys from hiring a team that, you know, a project manager and a few people that coordinate the pieces of these two projects? Like, that doesn't stop you from submitting separate applications to the governments. It seems like there's some, for some reason, you're unwilling to work together, and that's a real problem for our community. We're trying to understand these projects collectively because they have a massive cumulative impact, and we need to plan around that. So like, what is the obstacle? What do we need to change to move past this?
We have provided cumulative workforce numbers and curves through district staff, and we would be happy to share that with council directly as well. I would say the combined impacts of the project are limited in terms of the workforce influx on the community. We may see some impacts on traffic, and those will be determined through our traffic management plan. But as I mentioned, we've identified Fortis' mitigations, and then what other further mitigations do we need to put in place for Wood Fiber or to address some of those combined impacts?
Okay, I saw some question notes from our staff. If there's actually coordinated planning and documents that speak to the coordinated plans, I think we would all love to see those. I still, though, you know, in terms of some of the concerns that have been raised about the Fortis project, what is the obstacle? You know, why can't Wood Fiber say to Fortis, yes, you can have more time, you can have more money to resolve these situations? Or is Fortis refusing to accept that extra room to address some of these community concerns around the, you know, we spoke into them many times already?
We are, continue to work together, but again, we have to stress that there are two regulatory processes and two separate projects. So we will collaborate and work together and address this through the Technical Working Group. But that is, that is the way that it's going to be. There's two different schedules and two different projects, and two regulatory processes that are also running on different schedules.
Yeah, thank you. But just to, I'm not asking you if these are two separate projects. I know they are from the EA process. But what is preventing Wood Fiber from saying to Fortis, hey, we're hearing there's these concerns about your project. We will give you some more time. We will give you some more funding to resolve these. What is stopping Wood Fiber from doing those two things?
We continue to work with Wood Fiber to, we do not have the, even though we were paying for it, they are separate projects, and they are, we're relying on their expertise to run their project, and they're relying on us to, our expertise to run our project.
Okay, I'll move on for now. I'm wondering, are codes of conducts at work camps and some social services and rec at work camps, are those fairly typical these days, or is this something unique to what Fortis is proposing?
I would say many of the, many of the aspects that we've incorporated are fairly standard nowadays. And, but there are things that we're doing to go above and beyond what's typical. And so we've worked with, I can't speak to specifics right now because we're in the middle of a regulatory process, but some of the commitments that we'll be making as part of our approvals will be in excess of what's typical for industry today.
Okay, it would be good to understand that because I think, you know, just speaking to the concerns about mitigations, they haven't seemed sufficient to us and to the community. And, you know, we haven't seen great outcomes from other work camps. And so if you're doing pretty much the same thing, why are we expecting a different outcome here? And I think we're trying to understand what are the major fundamental differences about what's proposed with this work camp that's going to result in a different outcome than kind of all the other work camps?
Sorry, I just want to add to that. We do monitor government committees around looking at the national inquiry on missing and murdered indigenous women, and I want to reiterate, we take those recommendations very seriously. We are, we are working with the district right now. We've heard concerns about gender safety topics, and we are looking to develop programming to roll out with community stakeholders like Houssound Women's Center, Cedar Sky Community Services, and others. But we take it very seriously.
Thanks. This one is, I guess, a bit more for Fortis. I went to the November engagement, and what I understood from the people that I spoke to was that some of your subcontractors had gone ahead and booked hotels, but that wasn't what Fortis wanted, and that wasn't the expectation. And I sort of communicated that, I think, if we want to sort of set a positive tone, it might be worthwhile asking them to back out of those and find a different solution, sort of show good faith. But now I'm hearing, you know, it sounds like this is actually the Fortis' plan. So is Fortis' plan to take up our very limited tourism hotel stock and so on? That is the sort of, to push this forward? You know, that is what Fortis is asking its subcontractors and its employees to do, to take up our existing housing stock and tourism stock?
Our contractor Frontier Camper Michaels booked the hotel, and we were aware of that. We continue to work with our other contractors to look at alternatives, which may include local hotels and other options. So we continue, we're in the, we're continuing to explore options at this time in the absence of a workforce lodge.
And I'm just wondering, with Soraco... And I'm just wondering, with Soraco, I understand that there was agreements in place and, and some understanding that people might have to move out. But I'm just wondering, are these people that were having to leave the community anyways? Or at the end of the day, are we still ending up with 40, 45 families that are going to be without a home now? When this project moves forward?
I can't speak the details of individual families or residents, but I do know that every tenant who has subleased from wood fiber, it was aware of that it was a short term lease and understood that and we're happy with that arrangement.
Okay, thanks. I, I want to dig into engagement a little bit again. I, I went to the, the wood fiber engagement and, and one thing I noticed is some of the boards look like they are very old. They, they're talking about an upcoming application for the project to the E A O, not an amendment and an application. So, and I, I saw, you know, marketing campaigns from four years ago. And I found it very confusing to figure out what this project was about. Like are they proposing a new, a new project? Because it was like this, you know, new application coming up. So it seemed like there was a bunch of historical boards and so on. It was very confusing to understand where is this project, what's happening? I'm just wondering if you can speak to what happened there and going forward, how you will make sure that engagement information is actually current and relevant?
Sure. Thank you for the comment. All of those boards were produced specifically for the open house and the community services and infrastructure roundtable. My understanding is they featured new photos and initiatives that we've undertaken, at least since I've been at wood fiber over the past year. So noted and thank you.
Okay, and this one's a little more difficult. I, you know, you mentioned the, the advocates that were at the, the, the event. And, you know, in fairness, there are a couple of C M's who, who spoke about the project and, and introduced it. There were some advocates that raised a sign, but there's also a group of Squamish Nation elders that were quite concerned about the project and what it meant. And there was a, a rather difficult interaction with the R C M P as well, which I think left a bad taste in, in many people's mouths. And then also speaking to people coming out of some of the Fortis engagements or the most recent Fortis engagement, especially people who have had to deal with sexual assault. They are finding interacting with this project, providing feedback, getting information, attending these, this engage, these engagements, very triggering and difficult. And the responses don't leave them feeling listened to or heard or that anyone is watching out for their interests. So how, how are your projects addressing these sorts of concerns? So that the engagements are really hearing from people and making people feel safe to attend them and, and that their feedback is relevant and being listened to and they can see plans, they can see their feedback reflected in plans. Like how, how are we going to address these challenges?
So I will start by acknowledging on behalf of wood fiber that we made a mistake at our open house in terms of how those voices were managed and, and the over reliance that we had on the R C M P. So we apologize for that and we're committed to doing better next time. We are doing specific and targeted outreach as we look to defend, develop our gender based programming and sexual assault prevention programming. And we look forward to, to working with specific community members and nation members for how they want to be engaged in the development of that programming. We will ensure that there's robust plans and adequate internal resources put towards potential protest activity in the future. But those are, that's not something that we're prepared to discuss today at a public forum.
I'll just maybe speak for a moment to say, you know, we have designed our engagements in a way that are safer folks to participate and also welcome any range of perspectives on the project, want people to participate, share their views, understand and acknowledge that there are difficult conversations that we have and that could be triggering for folks. So I suppose if a public setting is not the appropriate place for that to take place, we do welcome folks to reach out to us directly to have more kind of private discussions on their concerns, to make sure that those are being heard and that we're addressing them. And so just acknowledge that for the community that, you know, if there's a conversation they want to have that they haven't had with us, please do reach out to us and we'll, we'll meet with you.
I'll take a pause for now and let someone else go.
Great. Thank you, Councilor Peddengill. Next I have Councilor Hamilton and I have Councilor Stoner on the list. I'll put Mayor Hurford on the list if they're, okay, Councilor Greenlaw, I'll come to you after Councilor Hamilton, because we haven't heard from you on this yet. So, Councilor Hamilton.
Thank you, Councilor French. Through the mayor. So my role as counselor is to make decisions that are in the best long-term interest of the Squamish community. At this point, through your presentations, the only long-term enduring benefit to this community that I see is the 100 jobs that will stay at the wood fiber facility. The long-term climate impacts are clearly large. And in my view, the benefit of these 100 jobs at wood fiber comes at a very significant cost to the short-term community safety, labor market, local housing authority and tourism sector. There are major short-term impacts for a rather small, long-term value added to our community. Beyond these 100 long-term jobs, what value does the wood fiber L N G and Eagle Mountain Pipeline project bring to the Squamish community?
I'll start. Thank you for the question. As you may know, this project is a $5.1 billion project. It's a huge industrial project for the province and it's going to create revenues for government that are going to help support reinvestments in the services that constituents and British Colombians depend on related to housing, further community infrastructure, health services, policing, security and all of that. So we see the revenue generation as a, a huge benefit for the province. Also, I think council is aware there's a taxation discussion ongoing between wood fiber L N G and the district staff. And so the, the taxation benefits of the long-term operations of the wood fiber site will provide benefits back to the community. I think from a global perspective, the product that we're, we're generating here and liquefying to be shipped to Asia displaces coal in jurisdictions that need it most and that reduces greenhouse gas emissions globally while not contributing any net new emissions here in B C. I don't know if anyone wants to add to that?
And certainly wood fiber is here for a long time. We anticipating operating for at least 45 years. And we are going to be an active community member and we want to support the community as much as we can through sort of the formal taxation and those kind of things. But also through our community partnerships, we see long-term relationships with a number of the local nonprofit organizations. And we will continue, continue to contribute that through our construction and operations.
I'll just say, you know, acknowledge and hear what you're saying on the construction impacts in town. And so I know we focused some of our conversation today on those impacts. We are committed to local and indigenous participation through construction on the project. So that's an area where we think there will be some opportunity. We are in ongoing conversations with the district as well through our terms of reference on a possible community contribution towards a, a district initiative. So that's early conversations, early days. But that's another opportunity for us to provide a benefit as a result of the project and the community.
Sorry, I do want to add one thing. Both of our projects have impact benefit agreements with indigenous groups. And so there's substantial benefits that are created through these projects to provide economic reconciliation in terms of procurement for, for nation-owned and endorsed businesses and jobs and training opportunities.
So just a follow-up, when I respond to the taxpayers of Squamish, I can say to them, if I approve this T U P, that my reasoning is the significant taxation benefit and 100 jobs that they're going to see for the four to five years of absolute disruption of our economy. Is that what I've heard?
I don't think it's just the taxation benefits, but the broad revenue generating benefits that come along with, with the province and the fact that that creates revenues to give back to the community in terms of some of the, the infrastructure projects that you're looking at in your capital plans and things that the community wants.
That's everything, Councilor Hamilton. Councilor Greenlaw?
Thanks. Through the chair, as a geologist, I'd like to point out that the conversation around carbon offsets for shipped fracked methane replacing coal in the Asian market is at best contentious. I have a few basically housekeeping questions. For the flotelle, I was wondering when you anticipate to see maximum numbers? And I think you were saying around 600 people will be the maximum on the flotelle. Yeah. So when are you expecting to see that level of workforce?
Our construction period is approximately 2023 to 2027 and we anticipate to start first delivery in 2027. I'm not sure, but I anticipate it would probably be in 20, late 2020, 25, 2026.
Yeah, around October 2025 is our peak construction.
Okay, thanks. And then you mentioned like a, a rotation of the staff. And I was wondering how they'll be getting there and from where and what that looks like.
We anticipate that about 60% of the local workforce will be from the Squamish District and Lower Mainland. And most of, and we said in our presentation, the movement of materials and workers will be through, through marine transportation.
And that would be docking where?
On site, directly to the flotelle. Workers are not accessing the community.
Where, like Daryl Bay? Is that, is that the plan? Where are you coming from, from this side?
Yeah, Daryl Bay is the plan for, for worker transportation for local workers.
Okay, thanks. And then I just wanted to clarify, you mentioned the ownership of the company was Canadian. I went to the information session in October, I think it was, maybe it was early November. And the employee there told me that it was actually a subsidiary of the Singaporean company Pacific Oil and Gas, which was part of Royal Golden Eagle, which is a Singaporean owned company as well.
That's right. For clarity, Pacific Oil and Gas is rebranded to Pacific Energy and yes, it is a subsidiary as you mentioned.
Thanks. That's what I got.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Greenlaw. Next I have Councilor Stoner, followed by Mayor Hurford.
Thank you. Through the chair, I just want to go back to the folks from Wood Fiber. You said you put in a significant amount of, of effort to submit an amendment to your E A to allow for the flotelle. And you said you did that largely in part of response to the community engagement process and, and hearing some of the concerns that you had. So I'm curious, from your perspective, what were the impacts to the community that you were trying to mitigate? If we had, if you, if those workers ended up in our community instead of on the flotelle? So what do you see as the impacts of having workers? Or what are the impacts that you're mitigating against? Having workers on the flotelle versus in our community?
Broadly impacts on housing, vacancy rates, rising, rising rental rates, community services and infrastructure, like health services. All of that will be provided directly on the flotelle. So we think that provides mitigation in and of itself.
But you, as a company, think it's okay that those impacts still happen as a result of the Fortis B C pipeline? There's no requirement to uphold that same standard of mitigating those impacts on our community that you're doing for your project for the project that is 100% dependent on your decisions?
I would need to go back to the fact that the projects are responsible for developing their own management plans to address community services and infrastructure plans.
But from a corporate standard, you're not holding up the same expectations across what you've set for yourselves and what you've set for those that you have contracts with. I just want to clarify that the standards are different.
The standards aren't different. We are working with Fortis and relying on their expertise. And we're using our expertise for our workforce and they will do theirs for this, for theirs, for their workforce.
But you've decided that the impacts are too great for your business to create on our community, but it's okay for Fortis to do so?
It would, the flotelle has been an operational decision that has been driven by, by feedback from the community.
Was there ever any decision or discussion with Fortis about housing their workers on that flotelle?
I cannot speak to that during my time, but I'll let Fortis weigh in.
One of the luxuries of being on the project for a long time is that you do have these sorts of conversations. So yes, we have had conversations with wood fiber about housing our, a portion of our workers on the flotelle. It's been a fairly modest amount is what we're looking at right now, approximately 50. But what we're, we're working through right now is things like timing and also considerations such as labor agreements that stipulate minimum requirements for accommodations. So we're currently working through that.
Okay, thank you. And I just want to follow up on, I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Okay, I have Mayor Hurford and then I'm going to put myself on the list, followed by Councilor Peddengill.
Thank you, Councilor French. So during the W L N G's presentation, one of the slides said 800 jobs during the construction. And is this an example of grouping the numbers between these two projects and discussing it as an overall? Or is that specific to the, the wood fiber portion?
That is specific to the wood fiber portion.
Okay. The, I, similar to, to Councilor Stoner's point around flotelle capacity, I'd say the, the currents, the current state for the Fortis portion of this, of this project is a, a lack of accommodation. And before that accommodation solution arrives, the optimist in me is, is hopeful that we can avoid this at the wood fiber site. But I acknowledge that it's a ramp up of, of required workers, which means that the capacity goes in in one piece and then it ramps up to fill it. So aligning those two things is a great example of, of, of a way that, that our community expects these two entities achieving one project, which is maybe I think how we should be speaking about this because I understand the different oversight and so on. But it's, it's one impact to our, to our community. So I think there's an expectation that whatever capacity exists overall is, is used to, for the exact reasons we all, the well-documented reasons of why we, workforce combination is, is generally, could be beneficial to prevent those, those impacts that we know to our housing markets and so on. So, and during the construction phase, which we hear is can commence fairly in short order, how, how is the community, how are you setting up so the community can engage with, with the, the overall project? If they have questions, comments, concerns, I'm, I'm not talking about feedback on plans. I'm like, you know, those, those other pieces, maybe we could take an example of a, of a, a potential violation of a, of a code of, a code of conduct where the person doesn't know which project this person is associated with. Is there a central point physically, virtually? Like how is that going to work?
We are working together with Fortis to exactly do that kind of thing. So people can reach out to us. And we will work together to coordinate where those responsibilities lie. If it's a complaint about our workforce, but we get it, but we get something from Fortis, we'll work very closely and in a very timely manner to address those concerns or questions immediately.
That interaction with the public happens where? At a joint office for the overall project? At a joint porthole virtually for the overall project? Or?
Those details are still being developed, but it, we will share with that, share with the mayor and council and the public as soon as it's ready.
I think this is another key area where this coordination is, is, is really expected from our community. So that if there's a problem with some aspect of, of the project, the general public doesn't need to know which piece it is or whose contractor it is or whatever, just that there's a, that there's a challenge. So that, that sort of one access point, I think is going to be crucial. So far on the project, over the many years, we've heard from different pieces of our, of our. on the project, over the many years, we've heard from different pieces of our, of our community that are, that are engaged in, in the process. And as, as construction kicks off, I think we're going to see a whole nother wave of folks that maybe don't, haven't even paid particular attention. They just heard a little bit about it, but now there's an issue that relates to their property or their, their day-to-day business in the community. And, and when that ramps up, if, if this project isn't ahead of that, it's going to fall to the municipality to coordinate that. So I would expect a singular point of contact, whether it's an office or virtually, or I'd say everything. And I'd also like, I also think that it should be someone's job somewhere to, to ensure coordination wherever possible. And I, I get sort of weaving it throughout all processes, but we should be able to point to, to one spot to have those types of concerns addressed, so that the responsibility doesn't get sort of fractured out into, that's WLNG, that's Fortis, oh, that's a subcontractor of, or a deeper down the line.
Because that's, that's exactly what we're taking into consideration. And certainly, right now, people can reach out to Wood Fiber through our, either through our community liaison person or through the, on our website at Contact Us, and it will get to the right people. But we are working on that right as we speak, on coordinating that effort, so it is a joint process and that people have a one-stop window to address those kinds of concerns.
Just need your microphone, Ms. Connolly.
I touched on it really briefly earlier, but that would be the, the purpose as well behind the joint communication protocol that we're working through right now. So to, to kind of house the expectations from each organization, and to your point, ensure that any kind of questions about who should answer what question is something that we deal with, the proponents behind the scenes, and make that easier for folks in the community. I think today that is happening in practice, in that if someone were to come to Fortis with a question about the Wood Fiber project, we would be sure to kind of funnel that over and connect them to the right person. But we're looking to formalize what the processes are for that, through that protocol.
How's the timeline on that compared to the workforce ramp up?
We're working through the details of the protocol document right now, so would intend to have that in place before construction begins.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Mayor Hertford. So I've got myself on the list next, followed by Councillor Peddengill, and then back around to Councillor Hamilton. And I'm interested to learn a little bit more from our Wood Fiber LNG guests about the current transportation scenario from this side of the water over to the site. How are the workers that are working there now currently being transported to the site on a day-to-day basis?
So currently, the workers are coming from Squamish Harbor. There's imminent plans to use Daryl Bay. And we're in discussions with district staff around the use of, of Daryl Bay.
Okay, you clearly anticipated my next question. Can you give us anything more precise on a start date for the use of Daryl Bay?
Not at this time.
Ballpark?
The coming weeks.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Councillor Peddengill.
I think that's news to me, that timeline. Maybe it's another timeline that's more aggressive than is realistic. But so a few things, you mentioned, there's a mention of a dollar value on benefit five, you know, it's a $5.1 billion project. But just to be clear, the plant's being built in China, the primary contractor for engineering construction is a Texas company. Wood Fiber successfully lobbied the federal government to waive steel tariffs meant to protect Canadian steelworkers. So that saves $350 million for Wood Fiber. We're looking at direct hydro subsidies of, in the neighborhood, last I calculated, based on Wood Fiber's energy requirements in their EAO submission, $45 to $135 million per year. So, you know, when you actually look at what money is, is sort of staying in Canada, being spent in Canada, it's a pretty, it's not that full $5.1 billion. A lot of money is being spent out of country. There's a lot of subsidies offsetting that. Would that be accurate?
We're doing a full analysis right now of in-country versus out-of-country costs, and the impacts of, of that work for the district is all being discussed through the taxation agreement, which is live right now.
Okay, I, this is maybe a Fortis question. My understanding and from previous Wood Fiber presentations too, and I was part of the, the LNG committee before I was on council, there's a certain amount of methane, I think it's 91% or something in typical fracked gas delivery to homes. And Wood Fiber for liquefaction requires, I think, 94% or 98%. And so there's processes to take out some of the propane, propane and butane and some of those things. But Fortis has been aggressively marketing that they're going to start putting renewable gas. And unfortunately, they're trying to claim that blue hydrogen is renewable, which it's not. But, you know, setting that aside, the plan is to put some hydrogen, whether it's green or not, in this. But my understanding is because of the liquefaction needs of LNG, you cannot have that hydrogen, or you need a fundamentally different plant, or some, somewhere in the process, you need significantly different, something that'll take that hydrogen out. So what that means is from at the very least Coquitlam beyond, there can be none of this renewable gas. It's got to be the, strictly the fracked gas. And, and so I'm just wondering, have I misunderstood something? Or is Wood Fiber planning a, an amendment that will handle, you know, processing of renewable gas to take that out? Is there plans to do something at Coquitlam to take this out? Or is there going to be a fairly significant part of the Fortis network that cannot handle renewable gas?
I'm unable to answer that question as my background is electrical engineering and not chemical engineering. But as a, as a, you know, on a basic level, renewable natural gas, aside hydrogen aside, renewable natural gas is, is essentially natural gas created from renewable sources such as waste, landfills, things of that nature. And so it's still contain, it's still highly, from a gas composition perspective, it's highly, you know, still highly methane. Overall, I, I would, I would just, from Fortis's perspective, we've designed our system to accommodate what we anticipate to be the future composition of gas in the system. So from a future-proofing perspective, we've accomplished that, but I can't speak on Wood Fiber's behalf.
So if I understand, then do you have any understanding with Wood Fiber about what percentage of methane will be in the gas you deliver? Because it sounds like from, you know, your BCUC applications and your plans for renewable gas, which includes a significant portion of hydrogen. So that means that the relative amount of methane will decrease, and then someone's going to have to get that methane percentage up so it can be liquefied. So that's either Wood Fiber has to do that, or you have to make sure you're not putting so much hydrogen in, as you've been planning in, in your general network to what's being delivered to Fortis. So I'm just, is that something that you need to take offline to figure out who's dealing with that?
I, I think we'll need to take that away as an undertaking. Again, this is outside of my area of expertise, and therefore I'd be hesitant to, to even attempt to provide an answer.
Okay, thank you. We, you know, there's concerns, we haven't talked about much today, but concerns about acid rock drainage. And I understand that the plan is to backfill the tunnel, and then the thought is that once we, once we do that, you know, seal it up, acid rock drainage won't be a problem. Like during construction, you have to have processing in place. But what mitigations are in place if we find out, oh, shoot, we actually have an acid rock drainage problem? And we've just seen it with, was it a mine recently? Or just got fined for acid rock drainage, and we've had a horrible problem in the sound because of the Britannia Mine kind of killed the whole sound. So what long-term mitigation or backup plans does Fortis have if they need to do long-term treatment for acid rock drainage? Is the room on the, the Wood Fiber site, does Fortis have land planned where they can have a longer-term treatment plant? Or does, is Wood Fiber responsible for that? Or how does that get managed?
In my previous statement, I stated that I wasn't a chemical engineer, and, and I, I actually did spend some time managing the tunnel component. So I do have an elementary understanding of this, and so I'll endeavor to provide an answer as best I can. Acid rock drainage, metal eaching is a concern when exposed, when the rock is exposed to oxygen. The, the plan for us as, as, as an avoidance here is to entomb that rock within the tunnel as it's inaccessible post-construction and backfilled with water. So the idea is to essentially choke off the oxygen. We will be, we will have a water treatment facility located on the Wood Fiber site. And until that water quality has balanced, we will continue to operate that water treatment facility.
And I would just add, from the Wood Fiber side, my understanding from our regulatory team is there's a management plan in development right now to address specific mitigations, which would include additional investigations and ongoing monitoring of risk, which is determined to be low currently.
Okay, and, you know, I keep on hearing from the Squamish Canyon project that there's, despite a lot of requests for consultation, for engagement, for mitigation work to be done, that there's been very little engagement and no mitigations or changes made in respect to the Canyon project, which I understand thankfully is a go. So I'm just wondering how Fortis plans to address that gap?
Yes, please, there's an extra seat at the end there, at the head table. Mr. Schobert? If you could just introduce yourself and then jump into the answer. Thank you.
I'm on. Gord Schobert, Senior Manager, Municipal and Community Relations for Fortis BC. Just to respond, Councillor Peddengill, to the Squamish Canyon question, we have met with the Squamish Canyon dating back to last spring, and we had a robust interaction of ideas and plans. Since then, we've provided them our traffic impact analysis. They've recently had access to our temporary use permit application for the workforce lodge. And we've reached out, well, four times over the last three months since October to sit down and meet with them. They're continuing to review documents. They've said, once the review is done, they'll get back to us. But we've stood ready to meet with them at any time. So we're still willing to meet with them.
Okay, thanks. I appreciate that. I hope some more coordination happens, because that's not the message I'm getting in my own experience. You know, I've asked questions about pipeline risk and so on, and I'm still having difficulty getting answers. It takes a, a year or two. I think I've been asking about the details of the risk of the, the pipeline through our community. But I guess I will leave it there and hope you can do a better job of coordinating with them, because it sounds like something is not connecting there. I think I'll leave my questions there for now. Maybe you have some wrap-up comments later.
Okay, very good. Next, I have Councillor Hamilton, and I'm just, I'm going to take a quick glance over to Councillor Anderson and make sure you're good. Go ahead, Councillor Hamilton.
Thank you, Councillor French. This is, a question is directly for Fortis BC. Could you please clarify who or what is defining or driving your construction start date? What is your, who is driving your urgency that's generating the significant impact on our community?
Our construction schedule is predicated on a targeted in-service date by Wood Fiber. I would acknowledge that our schedules are very different. Our project is a linear project, exposed to things such as weather. So there are some seasonal factors impacting our, our schedule, so very different. That's why you'll see that our schedule is out in front of Wood Fiber.
Thank you. And a follow-up for Wood Fiber. Do you accept and acknowledge that you are the driver of Fortis BC's timeline that is generating the disruption to our community?
We have to go back to, this is, yes, we see that both pieces are needed, but these are separate projects. And to meet at the in-service date of 2027, both projects will continue to work on their own schedules.
So could I ask, who is defining the in-service date of 2023? Or what, who is defining that in-service date?
Wood Fiber is, the facility will be operational, but we will work with Fortis to ensure that those schedules are met for that in-service date.
Next, I have Councillor Stoner.
Unless there are any further questions, I would like to put a motion on the floor for consideration by my council colleagues.
Okay. Councillor Peddengill, you indicated you had some final additional thoughts. Would you like to share those now?
Um, I, I think it would be appropriate after the resolution.
Very good. Before, Councillor Stoner, you proceeded, just want to do a check-in. Is there anybody else with any additional questions for our guests? Councillor Stoner.
Thank you. Through the chair, for my council colleagues, I'd like you to consider the following motion, that the mayor write a letter to the province that outlines the district's ongoing concerns with Wood Fiber LNG and Fortis BC's proposed schedule for the Eagle Mountain, the Eagle Mountain Pipeline to commence works in February 2023, and the significant negative impacts it will have on our local housing availability and affordability, the 2023 tourism season, local businesses via supply, via labor supply and housing affordability challenges, as well as community safety and emergency services. And that this letter be addressed to the Honorable Minister Hayman, Environment and Climate Change, Minister Osborne, Energy Mines, Low Carbon Innovation, Minister Kalon, Housing, and Honorable Minister Popham, Tourism, Arts, Culture and Sports, and that it be CC'd to the Premier, Honorable Minister Khan from Municipal Affairs, Squamish Nation Council, our MLA Jordan Sirdy, and our MP Patrick Wyler. That motion has been sent to our secretary, and I'm happy to read it out again if anybody wants me to.
Councilors are seconded for the motion? Seconded by Councillor Greenlaw? Go ahead, Councillor Stoner.
Thank you for considering this motion, council colleagues. I think that this is really important, that we start elevating this conversation to the province. The district of Squamish identified potential disruptions to labor supply, local businesses, impacts on tourism and traffic, potential shortages of accommodation and housing affordability as key issues back in 2015, when this project was first brought to us. These issues have only gotten worse in our community, and here we are. These companies are putting us in an untenable position, where they are saying that they have a construction timeline that needs to start in February, but they don't have an appropriate accommodation work plan for their workforce that they're bringing in. It's going to exacerbate some of the already significant challenges that we have. We know that the tourism sector is just recovering from COVID-19, and that we already have very low vacancy rates through the busy summer months. And we are, we've heard from today that contractors for Fortis BC have taken an entire hotel block off of the market for this coming summer. That has significant impacts. We also know that many of our local businesses can't hire because their workers can't live in our community because it's already too expensive. When you have a company that's going to come in and provide thousands of dollars of living out allowance to their workers, that has direct implications on the affordability in our community. You're going to move people, actual families, single people, older people who are struggling to live here. You are going to displace them, and that is not okay. And the fact that we're only seeing an application for a temporary use permit after the fact, after you have workers coming in, is also not okay. We've been talking about this with both of your companies since I've been on council, which is five years. And I'm exhausted that I'm sitting here still having this conversation with no real plan in place, but my community is desperately asking for one. And so I don't think it's fair that we're here, and that's why I'm putting this motion on the floor, because it's not my issue. It's your issue, and it's the province's issue. You are meant to deal with this. And instead, you're putting us in a hard place. And so that's why I think it's so critical that we write to the ministries and start our provincial advocacy now.
Counsel, any other comments? Councillor Peddengill?
Happy to support this, and I think we need to do a lot more. I'm incredibly disappointed with today's presentation. I, I understand with all due respect that you probably have direction from others at your company about what you can and can't say. But the, just absolutely mind-boggling frustration in hearing Wood Fiber fail to take responsibility for the EGP, the, the Wood Fiber fail to take responsibility for the EGP, the pipeline impacts. It is Wood Fiber. That is, is, everyone understands that Wood Fiber is driving the timeline and is setting the budget available to Fortis. And your refusal to take responsibility for those impacts, it's, it just, it's maddening. And I think, you know, setting aside the massive climate impacts in a climate emergency of this project, for the public to trust your companies, to work with your companies, it's not easy when they see this sort of behavior. When you're not able to give straight answers, when you're not able to take responsibility for it is quite clearly your responsibility. I think this is something that, that, I don't know how, because we've been asking for you folks to work on this for years, and it hasn't been done. We need a coordinated plan, not just coordinated communications, a coordinated plan that we can see, that we can understand. Coordinated cumulative impacts, we need that deeply and well-assessed that we can speak to so we can try and manage this as a community. I think, you know, what, I'm not sure if you're failing to understand or you just don't care, but the, this, this project is not solving problems that our community has. It's bringing a whole bunch of new problems. And so if you're going to do that, there has to be some sort of clear mitigations for those. And those haven't been presented to us. We get these sort of two separate projects. You know, we had to work so hard to try and get you folks in the same room at the same table to try and get some sort of coordinated understanding, and it's still, we can't get there. So like, you need to do better. And, and I hope with this resolution, the province will, will finally help make that happen a little more. But I'm very frustrated and disappointed with the unwillingness of, of Wood Fiber to take responsibility for this. Thank you.
Thanks, Councillor Peddengill. I have Mayor Hereford on the list, and I'll follow with Councillor Anderson.
Thank you. I think this is an appropriate step. I am, the province has acknowledged that we are in a housing crisis across the, across the province. And, and I'd, some would argue it's more acute in Squamish today without the, the negative impacts of, of this project. And given the timeline of both work commencing and a proposed work, a proposed work camp, which acknowledged could be a part of the solution, without those things even attempting to line up, I feel this is entirely appropriate to, to write this letter. And frankly, the, this issue has been highlighted even before, to Councillor Stoner's point. I'd say even before our, our timeline on council for more than five years and, and potentially right back to the, to the start. And to be here at the 11th hour without a solution. And we're trying, I think we're, everyone around this table is trying to, to minimize that, that impact. And we're not getting the results. We don't have a, we acknowledge, I think it's acknowledged, that we don't have a go or no-go for the overall project. And those that do should have included this piece in the, in the regulations, and they have not. And they've left us to deal with it without the, the levers, apparently, to get the, to get the results. So I'm happy to, to support the motion and, and write the letter. And I'm also confident that there's a solution in here somewhere if, if everyone was, was, provided the, the appropriate motivation to, to reach it. And I haven't seen that quite yet. So thank you.
Councillor Anderson.
Thank you. I will support the motion on, before us, but would just offer some cautionary or context considerations. First of all, our local housing crisis, of course, has multiple factors and players behind it, involved. And we can't be blaming this project for a housing crisis in any aspect of it. The circumstances for tourism accommodation, this is an ongoing dialogue between ourselves and Tourism Squamish, who will be guests here later today. It has also other players and influencers, including the District of Squamish. I think we should acknowledge the Wood Fiber LNG project's efforts, its investments, for example, in partnership in the Siraco project for its long-term and certain components of its workforce, and in the transportation or transit plans that it has put in place, as well as the flotel plans. This must be acknowledged. We should also acknowledge the real constraints on the Fortis Pipeline project. Real, as in physical constraints, as in the sites and opportunities within the District of Squamish and beyond. They're really challenging, and this we have also discussed as a council. The, there are real logistical challenges and trade-offs that Fortis has had to examine, and we have discussed them with them. Other potential disruptive impacts, for, for example, relating to transportation. This comes back to the constraints on the sites and opportunities available for a Fortis workplace solution. But having said all of that, I do think that the message being sent to the parties identified in the motion does has a useful function, that we're all in this together, but so are these other parties, not least the provincial government. Thank you.
Councillor Greenlaw?
Yeah, through the chair, I'd like to speak in favor of the motion as well. I appreciate that there are many efforts to introduce mitigation for the issues that these projects will present to our community or potentially present to our community, but I see no chain of accountability for when something goes wrong. And this makes me very uncomfortable with projects of these magnitudes. I would very much like to see clear chains of accountability for the negative impacts that projects of these magnitude inevitably have on communities. Thanks.
A thing from Councillor Hamilton. Okay. I too will be supporting the motion, and if you detect hesitation in my voice, it's because I am hesitating. We've written this letter previously more than once. And I think that progress has been made in coordinating the projects, and I want to recognize that and acknowledge that, and thank the proponents for doing what you have done to this point, to align your projects, to help the District of Squamish with the administrative burden that comes with the project. And also, in supporting the motion, will point out that the, the long-term history of this project has been very political. There is a long list of four-three council votes regarding anything to do with this project. And for the most part, the four-three votes have always fallen to a no side. There is a portion of our community that is looking forward to this project and supports the initiative, the jobs that it will bring, the taxation that it will bring to our community, and other potential benefits. So I will be voting in favor of this letter as I believe there is some value in reiterating once again the importance of the two projects coordinating and reducing the administrative burden for our community. Councillor Stoner.
I'd like to clarify that my motion doesn't actually say that that's the request of the provincial government. It's to outline that the timeline that has been presented by Fortis and Wood Fiber for their starting construction date in February 2023 is not feasible, given the impacts it will have on our community. I just want to make sure that it's clear what my motion says and what the letter is that we're writing.
Any further comments, counsel? Councillor Anderson?
Yes, I'd like to see a copy of the resolution, please, or have this written out if that's possible. Thank you.
Well, so, Councillor Anderson, in the meantime, I will ask our minute taker to review the motion. And Councillor Stoner, is it possible for you to forward that to, I think that's what's happening right now, Councillor Anderson. Go ahead.
The motion is that the mayor write a letter to the province that outlines the district's ongoing concerns with Fortis BC's proposed work schedule for the Eagle Mountain Wood Fiber Gas to commence works in February 2023, and the significant negative impacts it will have on our local housing availability and affordability, the 2023 tourism season, local businesses via labor supply and housing affordability challenges, as well as community safety and emergency services. And that the letter be addressed to Minister Hayman, Minister Osborne, Minister Kalon, Minister Popham, and CC'd to Premier Eby, Minister Kang, Squamish Nation Council, MLA Sturdy, and MP Wyler.
Counsel, just do one more glance around before I call the question. I'll call the question. All those in favor? Are there any opposed? And so the motion carries. Thank you, counsel. And in just wrapping up, before we move to our next item, I'd like to thank those who are gathered in the gallery today for respectfully listening to this conversation, and thank you to our presenters for bringing your information. And we'll recess for five minutes so that we can prepare for our next presentation. Thank you. Good morning, and we are back in session for this morning's committee of the whole meeting. And on to number four in our agenda, which is staff reports. And this is a real estate and facilities master plan and general works update. Take it away.
Good morning, Mayor and council. Thank you for your time this morning. My name is Cal Bragg. I'm the Director of Facilities Planning and Construction here at the district. This is a memo to council, and it provides a quarterly update. So this is one of four that we typically provide throughout the year. This is the first one for the year, and it is for the real estate facilities master plan projects and other general works. This includes the fire hall number one, the Alex Monroe Fire, excuse me, Alex Monroe Fire Hall. Fire Hall number two, which is Tantless Fire Hall, includes the temporary fire hall as well. The Public Works Facility, Brennan Park Recreation Center and the Fields as well. It's not just the building, it's also the fields and the works surrounding the, the building itself. The municipal office, covered structures, Valley Cliff Childcare, Squamish Adventure Center, and the Junction Park Washrooms. So Fire Hall number one, the Alex Monroe, it's operational currently as of July last year. We still got some deficiency works that we're working on, and this is typical for a brand-new building. The builder's done a great job. The quality is great. It's just working through some of the minor deficiencies. The Alex Monroe signage is in fabrication at the moment, and we'll see that installed in the, in the next few weeks. We also had some long-term supply items coming out of COVID that we're just waiting to replace here. One of them's a handrail. There's nothing functional or any major issues. We've got a couple of mechanical items coming through from the diesel generator. We've also staffed working on a post-mortem review, and this includes, and it's our first fire hall. We're building the next fire hall. We're just making sure that, you know, we build better in every single job that we do, and then we review any issues we had in the last one. So we're deeply involved in this and making sure the next one's going to be better than the, than the first one. So Fire Hall number two, I've got a 3D overview here. I'll run through as I play this one. So this one's a $15.8 million job. This is down at Tantless. This is our second fire hall. It's on time, on budget at the moment. We're proposing a handover of June 2024. Currently, the works are, drawings are 100% complete. We're just working through issue for construction at the moment. You'll see on site that the building's been demolished. We've also got machinery there, working through soil densification, and we're bringing the soils up to a post-disaster level. And this just includes, you know, ramming stoned piers. It's a rock densification system. On the sustainability level, this building performs very well. It is a cost, sorry, it's an energy-neutral building. And it works well from the greenhouse gas emission reduction. However, it does lack a little bit on, or not a little bit, it acts a lot, lacks a lot from the embodied carbon. And this is due to the amount of concrete in this building. It's because of the, the post-disaster level, and then also because we've allowed to build above the existing first two levels there. And staff are working on reducing the carbon offsets for them. So the next steps to obtain approval, it's in building permit at the moment, and we're looking to start the first concrete pour in March for the footings. So Fire Hall number two, temporary, this work is complete. This was done when demol, just before demolition of the, of the second fire hall. It happened, the project, or the budget is within the $15.8 million of the overview with Tantless Fire Hall, and we've had no major issues on that one. It's running well. On the Public Works Facility, we're adjusting timelines and budget. We're working through some pretty serious cost escalation. And this is generally what's happening in all construction at the moment. It's, it's the way that the market has gone. If everything goes to plan, we have a potential footing start of June 30 this year. The current works, you'll see on site that we've got a very, a very large mound of soil there. It's the preload. We're squashing the soils to increase the bearing capacity. The sustainability targets have been reached within the design, and we're also looking at co-location options as well. The next steps, we're zeroing in on budget. It's a real focus at the moment. The hurdles, as noted here, is the, the numbers are coming in higher than what the pricing has indicated previously, and we'll be coming back to council in February to go through budget in detail. So Brennan Park Fields and Lands. The, the Stage One Works, which is a grant-funded, or mainly grant-funded project of the $16.3 million project works, it's being funded $11.8 million through a grant. We're calling this Stage One. It's on time, on budget. These works include a combination of new build and also retrofit and renovations. The works include a new customer service area, about 3,500 square feet, a fit out to the lorry, a fit out to the mezzanine level to increase program and fitness space, getting access to that fitness space via an elevator, renovating the ice rink change rooms, and then also increasing the sustainability of the building. And again, we need to do this in line with the grants. When we have grants coming through, we have to literally follow the roads of what the grants are requiring for scope of works. On the sustainability side, we're changing the insulation and the, and the roof of the ice rink, and then redoing the mechanical system between the ice rink and the pool to take into the cold and the heat from each system, and it creates a very economical system. And there's also some landscaping involved in that. The construction start, we're aiming for Q3 this year. If we can drag it to Q2, that'll be ideal before June 30. At the moment, the project team's being engaged. We've actually started drilling on site. We're testing the soils there. The geotech was there this week. We're working with archaeology. And we're also including arch culture and social side very early on in the process to make sure we capture this within the design. So the next steps is, this is an IPD contract, and this is an integrated project delivery. It's the same as the system that we've used for Fire Hall number two. So we're engaging all the participants right now. We're defining the scope. We're working out a community engagement. This is very early stages in the process here. And also the, the impact on operations and scheduling, our master plan and the charter as well. So the project charter creates milestones and dates for what we're doing and when, and it manages expectations for council, community, and other staff departments as well. We've had no hurdles so far. With Brennan Park, the other projects outside of the building, we're looking at Splash Pad and Playground. The work that we're focused on this year is design-only. Construction is slated for next year. It's a $1.8 million budget. We're on time, on budget at the moment so far. It's early days. The Dog Park is a $40,000 budget, and that's to be designed and constructed this year. And there's also a trail between Brennan Park Building itself to go out to Finch Drive. That one's on time, on budget, and that'll be completed this year, a budget of $175,000. Municipal offices are on time, on budget as well. The timeline is per the RFP, or the Real Estate Facilities Master Plan. And that's the start after the fire halls are complete and the public works, projects are done. The budget's not developed. We're working through the space plan at the moment. It's a bit of a moving target. And the works right now, we've gone and reached out to department heads to resolve the size of the building required. We've then engaged a third-party architect to resolve that and, and, and detail the plan of what's required for a size for the offices. And we're also looking at co-location opportunities as well. And the next steps this year is to keep focusing on the partner opportunities, and we'll come back to council before June 30 to update this in further detail. Covered Structures is three projects. The Neighborhood Nooks, we had 12 created last year. One didn't get installed. We're going to work with planning at the moment. It's been moved from, I think it's Blue Jay Park area to Garabordi, and that'll be going in in spring this year. We are over budget on this one by 6%, which is $8,500, and this was due to increase of detail in some of the design. And we're working out now with budgets of where we're moving that money from. On the Eagle Wind Trees, there was trees proposed to go into the playground there. That was delayed. We've moved it from autumn or fall to spring to this year, so we're about four, five months late on this, on this completion here. And that budget is still within the Neighborhood Nooks. The other structure here is the downtown structure. We're calling it Grant Number, sorry, Number Four. And it's a grant-supplied, it's 100% funded, grant-supplied project. This one's on time, and we'll be designing and constructing this one this year with a budget of $98,000. Valley Cliff Childcare has been temporarily delayed. This is because of budgeting. The timing when we receive the grant, and this is 100% grant-funded, compared to when we're getting the market numbers back from construction, we've had some escalation items. We've reached back out to the grant funder to increase the amount, so we're working on that currently. The, if it's smooth and goes to time, and we're aiming to start construction before June 30 this year. At the moment, the project team's engaged and schematic plans are created. The next steps are to resolve the structure and get the contractors to be more involved in the design, go through the detailed design, and then a Class B. The next steps are to resolve the structure and get the contractors to be more involved in the design, go through the detailed design, and then a Class B and C budget. The Squamish Adventure Centre is on time, on budget. We've got a hard start date of February 27 this year. Current works, it's in building permit, and the contractor is engaged. The budget is over $700,000. We've left it slightly not specific because we've added scope, which is some sprinkler work and some rooftop unit work in there as well. So the next step is working towards February 27 with pre-construction, shutting down the building and the, as the tenants move out, and we focus on making this happen. The Junction Park Washrooms are slated to be complete last year. We've moved it to this year because we went out to the market, received one price only. It was above the budget. So we're reviewing that currently, and the aim is to get this one designed and complete this year. Overall on sustainability, I'll go straight to Fire Hall number two because we're calling that 100%. That's just a general bird's eye view of being energy passive. Fire Hall number one was about 60%, 70% of that, and then the Public Works Facility is kind of sitting in between there. Brennan Park, we're working on the sustainability side on that one as well at the moment. For grant funds, we've had two projects approved. One's Brennan Park Recreation Centre, which is one I've just gone through, which is we're calling Stage One. It was a $16.3 million project. The other one is the Covered Structures for $98,000. We have two in application right now. Another one for Brennan Park, which is a $14 million project. And then we've also got the one in Fire Hall number two. For Brennan Park Recreation, this one is 100% sustainability-focused, and that will be reducing the, or increasing insulation for the outside, and we're working on the building envelope. That one unfortunately doesn't allow us to add a pool or a ice rink. It's specifically and very strict along the lines of doing a sustainability input only. So the Fire Hall number two will be finding out in April this year if it's a go or no go, and the Brennan Park one aiming around mid this year if it's a go or no go. Thank you.
Council, do you have any questions for Mr. Bragg? Counselor Anderson, followed by Mayor Hurford.
Mr. Bragg, in the schematic of the Tantless Fire Hall number two, you're indicating mostly a, foreseeing mostly a parking lot use under the power lines behind. My question arises from some discussion that has, is taking place regarding a matter we'll be dealing with this evening. 1005-1009 Raven Drive Development, where some issues regarding what is allowable under hydro transmission lines and the consultation required with BC Hydro. Some issues have come up or some questions. My question to you is, is there a need for discussion with BC Hydro? Are there scenarios for alternate or mixed uses, shelter buildings of some type in the, at the Fire Hall number two? Or is it simply perceived to be parking use and that the consultation requirements might be minimal for that? What are, what is the status of consultation requirements with BC Hydro?
Through the chair, that's a good question. To answer specifically, we are in discussions with BC Hydro. There is an existing use there. It has been a car park historically. We have discussed adding buildings under the hydro lines. We've got a hard no. You can't construct buildings under the heart, under the power lines. And so we focus the design around keeping it as a car park.
Thank you. On another topic, in your account of the status of plans for municipal offices, you referred to in the report before us, non, or a space plan update. And you're also referring to co-location partner or co-location options in your presentation just now. Does this include non-office uses? In the past, for example, there has been a notion, at least of a gallery use that did generate some conversation in the arts community as they may have some opinion about, about these sorts of things. And I'll actually cite another example, and that is at Brennan Park, where in your report today, you're, you've highlighted arts, culture, inclusion, quote unquote. What is the status of our engagement with the cultural community regarding these potential uses? And I would like to highlight these two sites, Municipal Hall and Brennan Park. And finally, I'll just cite Chair, that we had a letter in last year from eight performing arts groups, and they mentioned a district, a potential district project of last year. I'll quote, "It is our understanding that council may consider Real Estate and Facilities Master Plan Public Engagement Initiative as per a staff, Real Estate and Facilities Master Plan Public Engagement Budget Request to Council October of 2021, referring to undertaking conversations with directly impacted stakeholders in recreational and cultural facilities." I'm sorry to, of the length of that, but in a nutshell, we didn't proceed, as I understand it, with that proposed project of a specific engagement initiative with the cultural community. What is the status of plans at this time for engaging with that community about these co-location or space plan opportunities?
Through the chair, I think it was a couple of questions in there. One was direct to municipal offices. And yes, everything's on the table as far as working with a co-location. It can be with the government, could be with the non-government, square foot. We've also got community, arts, culture, heritage, the whole. It's literally, literally right now, everything is on the table. Nothing's been closed. So as we work through this year, we'll be updating specifically where we're sitting on those, but everything's sitting on the table. As far as arch culture introduction into the Real Estate Facility Master Plan Projects, Brennan Park is very early days, and we've recognised this with the project team. And the earlier we put this into the, sorry, the earlier we add this into the design system, the better project we're going to get. So we've supplied all the information. We've supplied all our backup documents to the project team, and they're working through that at the moment. So we try and inject this as much as we can into every single project, and by having it very early on, that's how we get there.
Thank you, Mr. Bragg. Mayor Hurford, followed by Counselor Hamilton.
Thank you. Thank you for the update. Lots, lots going on and some exciting things. I was curious around the, at Brennan Park, when we look at the building envelope work and particularly that, that grant application around the more efficiencies there. And thank you for highlighting what it doesn't do as far as the, you know, expansion. I'm curious how future expansion plans are accommodated while we're working on the envelope, like that when it is time to do whatever that night, that, that action of a, whether it's a rink or pool or so on, that sort of affects that envelope. Like, I'm just trying to make sure that, or trying to understand where those efficiencies are and where those complexities are around making what we have now work and, and not further complicate or add expense to future expansions that are, that are being planned. And how, how has all that been sort of thought of in general?
Through the chair, Brennan Park is a complex project. We're dictated mainly by funding and then timing of when that funding comes. The way that we manage this is creating a master plan, knowing what scope of work ideally that we require, and then picking and choosing and basically putting puzzle pieces into that to make sure it fits. For example, you know, as grants come up, and we can specifically focus this on the envelope, we know the envelope needs to be updated. We also need to make sure that we're not doing work that has to be redone in the future. So if we know that this is coming along the lines, we do allow the design nice and early to allow for that to happen. So we don't have to go back and redo any work. So we're starting with the master plan, knowing exactly what we want.
Counselor Hamilton.
Thank you, Counselor French. So through the chair, thank you very much. Fantastic to hear everything that's going on. I can imagine it's very challenging to put together these projects in the combination of inflation, labour markets and grants. So my question actually is about the solar panels, and I suspect that the grant may have a, be a factor in this. So the solar panels on Fire Hall Two, I have four questions that are all leading one to another. I'll ask you one at a time, and if you don't know the answer to one, that's fine. We'll move on to the next one. You might not have these on the top of your head. Do you know what the cost of the solar panel installation is?
Through the chair, you've put me in the spot. No, but I can get that for you.
Great, no problem. So if you don't know, you don't know the rough payback time for the solar panels, right? Because, you know what I mean by payback time? You buy the solar panel and then it-
Yeah, through, I do. We have worked that out with the, may lead into your next question. The reason we've got solar panels on there is if you create a building that's a thermos, you don't need solar panels. We've had to create energy production to get the passive level for the, for the whole design there, which is the reason that we've got solar panels on there.
Okay. And the fourth question then, is the, are the solar panels required for the FCM grant? Is that, is the, is that passive standard driven by the FCM grant or from our desire to be passive?
It's initially driven through the FCM grant. So going back a couple of steps, we created a sustainability level for Fire Hall number one that suited Squamish. We didn't take one of the generic ones, which was lead or passive or any of that. We kind of grabbed the best of what they had and then created our own level. For this one, we started going down that route, and then the FCM grant became available. We need to aim for passive level buildings if we want to hit the C cap number for 2030. So it actually does line up with the grant applications and our numbers for the buildings that we should be building towards 2030.
So one of the, one of the things, I'm struggling to understand, one of our statements, one of our, our Community Climate Action Plan is premised on the, the notion that we have low-carbon, access to low-carbon electricity. So it's not clear to me how the cost of the solar panels is offsetting carbon emissions. Can you, has, has that study been done? Do we have numbers on what carbon offset is happening due to the solar panels on top of Fire Hall Two?
We do have that number. I don't have it in front of me. The focus is if, working top-down, if we need to create a passive level building, sometimes they'll need solar panels, sometimes they don't. It depends on the design. So that's why we work top-down on this one, but I can, we've gone through the numbers and worked out the return on investment to put these on there. This one was a bit different because we needed them, we wouldn't have got to passive level if we didn't put them on there. So if we had a building that's passive, and then we put them on there, then it'd be a business case when we're looking at a return of investment. In this case, we didn't quite need to do that because it was part of the design to get to passive. However, we know what the return of investment is, and I can send those to you.
Great. And one last question. There's also talk of putting a second story on the fire hall. Does that mean reinstallation of the solar panels on the upper story, and is there a significant cost to that reinstallation?
Through the chair, that's correct. We've designed the building to allow, and that's one, sorry, one part of the pie. There's other mechanical units that we basically need to pick off and then extend and then put them back on top. Obviously, solar panels, solar panels need to go on the roof to access the best sun. There's a couple of mechanical units as well, but we've designed the building to allow for this. We've designed service shaft and accesses, and we just know exactly what's going on. So if the project team did need to build it on top of this building, they've made it as easy as possible to take the items off to then reinstall.
Thanks to Counselor Hamilton. Counselor Penningill?
Yeah, thanks. Just a couple of questions about the Valley Cliff Childcare. I know we're hoping that the province will come through on, you know, understanding cost escalations and help us out with that. The temporary delay though, at this point, is it strictly funding and as soon as we know we're good to go full steam ahead, or that's, or is the lack of funding, or the funding uncertainty delaying other planning? So we may find ourselves that even if we get the funding confirmation in a month or two, we're, we're pushed back a year because we paused on planning?
Through the chair, that's a good question. We could be pushed back from timing. The longer the delay we have from this grant, knowing, the longer we get pushed out. We haven't updated our programming based on that because we're anticipating an answer in the next month or so. If it goes beyond that, then we'll be delaying the, the end date of this, and we also have to redo the scope of work. And there's a lot of, again, it's the, it's the construction cost between the scope of work and what we're getting for that, for the, for the money as well. So the answer is yes, we could be delayed here.
Okay, I guess a question, I'm not sure if it's for staff or councillor, both is, can or should we consider this in our budget amendment? And maybe that's something to discuss then, or I'm not sure, but I'm not sure. It's a question that pops into my head.
Mr. Bragg, no thought on that?
Through the chair, yes, there's thought on that. I need to, I need to dive in a little bit further to give you a definitive answer.
Counselor Stoner.
Thank you. Through the chair. There, so there's been ongoing discussion around the potential for adding stories above the second fire hall. I heard you say that we're going to start construction in March, which is great. Don't want to delay the process. I'm trying to understand where kind of the final turning point is for us, like, and we may already be past it, for us to add those additional stories before the end of this, like, current construction cycle. So if, I'm thinking that there's money coming from the province in terms of building housing, for example, we, we're seeing it come down. If there was a quick turnaround on that, could we still build additional floors on the fire hall right now, or are we too late the game?
Through the chair, we've missed the boat in an ideal situation, but if we receive funding tomorrow, we can still make it happen. We can make it happen at any time. It's just a matter of additional work and additional costs. So ideally, we start constructing before obviously the end of the project. So the earlier that we get it, the better.
Thank you. And then one other small but important question. When can we expect community engagement on the Splash Park? I suspect that'll be an exciting topic for our community and one that I get lots of questions about.
Through the chair, the District is talking to participants and the market and seeing what is viable. Once we've got our ducks lined up, so to speak, then we'll be reaching out to the community to seek further feedback and input.
Thanks, Counselor Stoner. Just one quick one for me. The information you shared about Junction Park Washrooms had me thinking. I, I don't recall being updated on the status of those washrooms after they were, I was going to say vandalized, but I think that what happened to those washrooms was a little more than vandalism. Are those washrooms open now? And if yes, is it a sort of a temporary setup in there until a more permanent washroom solution is in place?
Through the chair, I need to talk to Facilities on that one. I believe they are open for a point of time, but I'll, I need to come back with that information.
Okay, very good. Counsel, anything else for Mr. Bragg? Counselor Anderson.
Chair, if you'd like, I'd like to offer a general comment. This should be appropriate this time.
Yes, please.
Citing from Mr. Bragg's report on the Fire Hall number two, there's reference to arts, culture, social accessibility, future airspace use for affordable housing, community building, artwork, culture, social detail in the works. Elsewhere, there's a reference to staff reaching out to Affordable Housing Finance here, manager for build-out options above the fire hall. I'd like to again mention the February 23 letter that we received from eight performing arts groups. And in fact, there are some additional groups that would today be signing on to that letter that have kind of come out in the ongoing conversations in the cultural community. To quote from that letter, "We wish to encourage consideration of performing arts rehearsal and instruction, studio and related uses for the future upper floor." I regret that we did not have a response from the District to that letter, considering the collaborative effort that was behind it with several organisations involved. At the end of this month, I do understand that staff are intending to meet with one of those organisations, and I think that's very encouraging. We discussed last fall, the last council, coming, or doing some further deliberation about setting a direction for the upper floors of Tantless Fire Hall number two. But due to our tight schedule, we never did get around to that errand, but we did, the Mayor Elliott clearly wanted to have that conversation of further deliberation and setting direction. I guess in the end, I'm, what I'm suggesting here is that a clear engagement plan with the cultural community and for other items in this report with the recreational community would be appreciated. And I know I've spoken to a couple of the sporting, amateur sport organisations that would appreciate this. So we didn't strike that project last year or within the current budget year for a specific engagement plan. But I think this would be desirable, and I don't think that the cultural groups and in particular performing arts consultation needs are necessarily satisfied by the current Arts Council project. I think it is our responsibility with the co-location and shared uses, opportunities that exist in a few facilities, that the District plays its role in, in such engagement. But overall, I think this is a marvelous report, and I appreciate being kept up to date and, and a full report with lots of detail. Thank you.
Mayor Hurford.
Thank you. Just some quick comments. Thank you so much for the presentation. I, I, I enjoy these, and there is substantial progress each time, even if it's not a, you know, new building-
progress each time, even if it's not a, you know, new buildings just leaping out of the ground as we sort of would, would like them to as we set out to sort of address the, the community needs that these buildings will, will fill. I think the, it's a, acknowledge it's a very challenging time from a cost in many ways. And in this context, we'll say the, the cost impacts of sometimes the delay drives, it drives costs and sometimes waiting drives, there's a labor cost there. So, and I appreciate the, the ongoing work to help minimize that negative consequences of those things for, for our community. I think I'd also like to celebrate the, the amount of funding we've been able to secure from other levels of government, which really helps make these things go. And it does, and it is the, the excellent preparation work that positions us to be successful. So thank you for, for that and pass it on to the members of your team that are, are doing those, those pieces. And I hopefully we're successful in those outstanding grants that are there, not least of which that rather large one at Brennan Park and sort of the last bit that will hopefully get us over the line with the, the Valley Cliff childcare space. So I look forward to the next update and hopefully we've got some positive news there and, and maybe costs go the other way, but I'm holding my, I'm not holding my breath on that one. So thank you so much.
Okay, councillor, I'm getting hungry and we're, we're heading into lunch break. I'll just check with staff. Is there a desire to have movers? Okay. So moved by Mayor Hurford to receive the staff report, seconded by councillor Stoner. I'll call the question. All those in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Bragg, for the presentation. With that, we will recess for lunch and returning at 12:30. Good afternoon and welcome back to our committee of the whole meeting. We're on to item number five in our agenda, staff reports, and I am going to turn it over to staff at this point. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll just get the presentation up and running. All right. Thank you, Chair and Councillor. My name is Catherine Mulligan. I'm the Economic Development Officer for the District of Squamish. And today I'm joined by Heather Kawaguchi, Director of Member Relations for Tourism Squamish. Heather will be presenting the results from the 2022 Tourism Squamish District Partnership and can answer questions that may arise as a result of this presentation with respect to Tourism Squamish's operations. The objective of today's presentation is twofold, to provide results from the 2022 partnership agreement and to seek approval from council to establish an agreement and funding for Tourism Squamish for 2023, as well as to seek approval from council for Tourism Squamish Society to make an application for the collection of municipal and regional district tax. Now I'm going to just cover off a little bit of background about the partnership between Tourism Squamish and the District of Squamish, as well as pertinent service agreements. So to provide a quick summary, since 2013, Tourism Squamish has been contracted by the, by the district to provide visitor services on behalf of the community. Between 2013 and 2020, the total annual contract value was $100,000. Between 2015 and 2019, the district also provided Tourism Squamish with an annual operating grant of $50,000. This grant lasts in 2020 and instead the district elected to provide a $25,000 grant to undertake a fall promotional campaign supporting COVID-19 messaging. At that time, council also directed staff to identify long-term funding, a long-term funding approach to support Tourism Squamish's continued operations. In 2021, the district received a grant from the province's Tourism Dependent Communities Fund for the revitalization of the Squamish Adventure Centre as a tourism oriented building. As part of this work, the district with its partners Tourism Squamish and the Squamish Chamber are developing an operational plan for the centre. District staff has recommended that the long-term funding approach not be recommended until such time as an operational plan for the Adventure Centre is confirmed. So as, as such, in 2021 and 2022, the district entered into an annual partnership agreement with Tourism Squamish, providing them with grants of $150,000 each year towards the implementation of their strategic plan, including the provision of visitor services. This agreement identified a high-level evaluation framework for which the results have been included as an attachment in the report to council. And now I'm going to turn it over to Heather, who will summarize the results from the 2022 Tourism Partnership.
Thank you, Kate. Good afternoon, Mayor and Councillor. My name is Heather Kawaguchi and I am the Director of Member Relations and Visitor Experience. I oversee the operations through the visitor centre, as well as our mobile street team and destination stewards. Leslie Weeks, our Executive Director, is unable to attend today due to an unavoidable scheduling conflict. To begin, we'd like to thank you for your support in 2022. It was another recovery and rebuilding year for the tourism industry and we're grateful for our partnership. Today, we're going to go through a few slides from each of our key focus areas to review some of the highlights from the 2022 year. We plan to return at a later time to share our five-year strategic plan and tactics for the 2023 year when there is a time available. So our key focus areas, visitor experience, destination development and destination marketing. Our first priority area is visitor experience and specifically around delivering exceptional customer service, having meaningful interactions with our visitors and fostering remarkable experiences. There are 129 community-owned visitor centres throughout BC that make up the visitor services network program. Visitor centres play a pivotal role in providing accurate and timely travel information to those looking to explore communities, locate accommodation, visit attractions and participate in tourism activities. During natural disasters, significant weather events and the recent pandemic, community visitor centres are instrumental in communicating critical health orders, public safety information, travel advisories and restrictions, while supporting businesses and boosting local economies. So this slide here illustrates the various channels utilized as part of our visitor servicing methods. To complete the physical, or sorry, to complement the physical bricks and mortar visitor centre, we have prioritized the digital visitor experience, a very important part of visitor servicing, pre, during and post-visit. Beginning February 1st, we will launch an intercept surveyor team who will be out in the field collecting data for the next 12 months to provide insights into visitor profiles and help build the foundation for another tourism sector impact snapshot. So our visitor numbers at the Adventure Centre began to show signs of rebounding in 2022 and our team qualified more than 62% of the people who entered the building. Over 84,000 visitors were provided with information on recreation activities, adventures, attractions and accommodations, as well as provided assistance with planning their travel in and around the region. Both of these numbers indicated a return to pre-pandemic volumes. We monitor visitor origin and for the first time since 2019, we saw the return of the broader Canadian domestic markets in addition to the US and European markets. Our next key focus area is destination development. And for the second year, we brought back our destination steward program. We train local ambassadors and head out in our Explore Squamish responsibly car to busy recreation areas and visitor pinch points. Our ambassadors deliver information about how to recreate responsibly. Messages such as, don't poop on the trails, pack in and pack out, leash up your dogs, have a trip plan and best practices for handling wildlife encounters. Armed with our Explore Squamish Responsibly stickers and people counters, our team recorded a variety of observations in their daily activities, including information and insights around issues such as garbage in recreation areas, illegal camping, overcrowding and recreationalists who were ill-prepared for their planned activities. This year, our team visited 10 key locations and hotspots where they interacted with almost 6,000 people, handed out over 4,000 stickers and greeted over 700 dogs. As part of our ongoing work in destination development and stewardship, we dedicated well over 100 hours to the Sea to Sky Destination Management Council. And more specifically, a subcommittee of the council focused on developing a destination education initiative to address the challenges facing the region, such as unmanaged camping, increased need for search and rescue and overuse issues in both urban and rural locations. An awareness campaign was developed for the region titled, "Don't Love It to Death", and the campaign focuses on nine identified pain points. The "Don't Love It to Death" campaign is a reminder to locals, visitors and outdoor enthusiasts to be mindful of the impact of their behaviour and activities on the Sea to Sky Corridor's delicate ecosystems. We encourage people to visit the Sea to Sky Corridor and enjoy everything this magnificent region has to offer. Just please, don't love it to death. There are several campaign ad components in this campaign, including print and social media, a dedicated website, signage and a partner toolkit. Destination marketing priorities for 2022 were focused on increasing visitation outside of peak summer season and increasing length of stay. Some of these programs that we executed to do this included our sip and savour campaign, a dine-around campaign that encourages visitation in November. The Explore Squamish card offering $50 credit towards several local activities and attractions during off-peak season. The Squamish Craft Tasting Trail and passport encouraging visitation during poor weather periods. The Sea to Sky Cultural Connector in partnership with Whistler and Pemberton to promote spring and fall travel for our cultural experiences. We also created three-day and five-day getaway packages, featuring activities and accommodation to encourage longer stays during the midweek. And in addition to these marketing campaigns, we continued our effort to expand our content dedicated to suggested itineraries and travel ideas for off-peak times. Thank you.
Thank you. In 2023, staff are recommending that the district enter into a partnership agreement with Tourism Squamish Society for the implementation of their strategic plan, which includes visitor servicing, management, destination development and marketing. The focus of the strategic plan was included as an attachment with the committee of the whole report. Additionally, staff are recommending an initial grant for 2023 of $100,000 to support the implementation of Tourism Squamish's strategic plan. An additional $50,000 grant is recommended should the district be successful in securing additional funding from the province's Destination Development Fund. And this $150,000 is part of Economic Development's 2023 operating budget. Staff are recommending funding contingent on the successful application to the DDF fund based, sorry, in order to ensure that current works on the Adventure Centre that are underway are funded currently. So right now, $50,000 has been allocated to the provision of the works that are underway as part of the district's funding with the Tourism Dependent Community Fund. And therefore, it's district, it's staff's recommendation that we withhold the additional $50,000 in grant money until we secure the additional, or if we secure the additional funding. And then additionally, just the grant and the partnership supports strategic and organizational priorities centered on the local economy and jobs and the building, and building bridges goals as part of our current strategic plan. So as such, staff proposed the following council resolutions. With that, that, that's the end of this portion of the presentation.
Councillor, are there any questions at this point? Councillor Penningill?
Yeah, thanks for the presentation. Just wanted to understand some of the comments about the MRGT, the hotel tax. I understand if the district wants to.
Yeah, councillor Penningill, it's not, that is the next topic? Oh.
My apologies.
You can hold it for, okay. Anybody else on, on this councillor Stoner?
Thank you. Through the chair. Just curious if either of you can speak to what percentage of Tourism Squamish's operating budget the district grants cover?
Through the chair. I don't have the exact percentage that it represents, but I, in previous review of financial statements of Tourism Squamish, I, I believe that it's somewhere in the range of 10 to 20%. But I would need confirmation on that one.
Councillor, anything else? Otherwise we'll move to presentation number two. Oh, yes. Oh, yeah, we do have. Okay, so these are the recommended motions in front of us. Moving both of them, councillor Stoner? Two separate, okay. So I've been instructed, we're going to handle them separately. So the first motion that the District of Squamish execute a partnership agreement with Tourism Squamish Society for the delivery of tourism services and approve a grant of $100,000 for implementing the society's 2023 strategic plan, subsequent to providing notice of assistance in accordance with 24.1D and 24.2 of the community charter that is moved by councillor Stoner, seconded by councillor Hamilton. Councillor Stoner, would you like to speak to it?
Just briefly, thanks for being here and for the presentation and for all the work that you've done in the 2022 season and to carry that forward into 2023. I really appreciate the more holistic approach that Tourism Squamish has started to take to destination management to also address the education and outreach and a component of the "Don't Love It to Death" campaign that stood out for me, that you spoke that it speaks to both locals and visitors alike. And I think that that's really critical. When we start to push this messaging, that it's not just the few people that are coming here to visit our community, so that there's more of us just generally that are getting out and it's that cumulative impact that's having, that's really straining our natural capacity. And so just thanks for the work and happy to support this. And thanks to staff for finding a way to cover the pieces while we move some money around and hopefully are successful on some grants.
Are there any further comments? Mayor Hurford, followed by councillor Penningill?
Yeah, I'm, I'm happy to support. Thank you for the presentation today. I think it's great to, to see the return to, to sort of pre, pre-pandemic numbers and, and I really truly appreciate the visitor management piece. I think it's a crucial part. And if we're, as we advance our joint goals around more, even more activity in the, in the tourism sector, I think it's incredibly important that we, that we keep our eyes on that particular piece so that we can maximize the benefit and, and do our best to mitigate any negative impacts. And I think we're well on the way there and I look forward to seeing that work ongoing. So thank you very much.
Councillor Penningill?
Yeah, thanks. I will be supporting the resolution. I think it's, it's been exciting to see how, how effective Tourism Squamish has been at promoting the sector and how well the sector has done. Pre-pandemic, I had been very optimistic that we wouldn't need to see community funding of, of the destination marketing. But the pandemic, I think, made that necessary. And, and again, pleased to see how Tourism Squamish has helped the sector navigate that challenge. And although we've seen a rebound, I think from the presentations earlier today, we see that there are new significant headwinds facing our tourism sector, which aren't, from my perspective, as aligned with our economic direction. And so I think it is important that we do what we can to make sure that we don't, the sector doesn't lose ground again because of some of the other projects that are coming forward. And I hope we can all work together through these new challenges for good outcomes. And, and so because of that, I will be supporting this. Thank you.
Seeing no other hands, I'll call the question. All those in favor? And then the motion passes unanimously. And councillor, we have a second motion in front of us, that the District of Squamish approve a grant of $50,000 to Tourism Squamish Society towards implementation of their 2023 strategic plan contingent on the district's successful grant application to the BC Destination Development Fund in 2023 and subsequent to providing notice of us. Okay, so I'm working off of an old, very good. Moved by Mayor Hurford and seconded by councillor Stoner. Mayor Hurford, would you like to speak to it? Did I see your hand, councillor Anderson? Did I see your hand, Counsel Anderson? Okay, so I'll call the question. All those in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. And so that takes us to the next half, the next portion.
Thank you. Heather will be available to answer questions also related to municipal and regional district tax on behalf of Tourism Squamish during this presentation. So I will now move to municipal and regional district tax application. Again, to provide some background in terms of the MRDT program timeline, municipal and regional district tax is an up to 3% tax that was initiated in '87 by the province of B.C. It's applied to the sale of short-term accommodations provided in participating areas of B.C. on behalf of municipalities, regional districts, and eligible entities. Taxable accommodation can include hotels, motels, resorts, beds and breakfasts, cottage cabins, and other short-term lodging. MRDT is jointly administered by Destination British Columbia and the Ministry of Finance, Ministry of Tourism, Arts, and Culture. Tax was introduced initially to assist communities in funding local tourism marketing programs and projects. And in 2018, the province added affordable housing as a permissible use of MRDT, permissible use of revenue from MRDT. And additionally, in 2022, the province has made it now mandatory that online marketplace facilitators located out of B.C. register to remit PST and MRDT on these services. And additionally, the province has introduced a new major events MRDT for up to 2.5% on STR sales or short-term rental sales to help cover community costs associated with hosting major events. Just to note, the District of Squamish increased the MRDT from 2% to 3% in 2018. So as mentioned as part of the previous slide, while MRDT was originally established to support tourism marketing programs and services for communities, in 2018, affordable housing was added as a permissible use of MRDT funds, and the province began collecting MRDT revenue from online accommodation platforms. While online accommodation platform MRDT revenue may be used for a variety of purposes related to affordable housing, the use of general MRDT revenue for affordable housing requires support from tourism accommodation providers. And you'll see that a definition between, the difference between an online accommodation platform and the general MRDT properties has been provided on the slide. So a community scan by staff looked at the 68 jurisdictions that currently collect MRDT and identified that 15 use OAP revenues to fund affordable housing initiatives. Of these, one jurisdiction uses both OAP and general MRDT for affordable housing purposes. MRDT OAP revenues for affordable housing may be used for acquiring, constructing, maintaining, or renovating housing or shelter, acquiring or improving land used for or intended to be used for housing or shelter, supporting the acquisition, construction, maintenance, renovation, or retention of housing or shelter, or the acquisition or improvement of land intended to be used for housing or shelter, supporting housing rental or shelter programs, or for paying expenses related to the administration disposal of housing, shelter, and/or land acquired with money paid out of MRDT revenues. Select jurisdictions have also applied to the province to apply MRDT for capital projects typically related to tourism infrastructure and debt servicing. Jurisdictions using OAP for affordable housing vary greatly in size, the number of properties, and accommodation revenues. Compared to the 15 jurisdictions, Squamish's overall MRDT revenue is considerably lower. However, the share of OAP revenue varies among jurisdictions, and OAP revenue may be comparable. The district does not have the actual split of OAP versus general MRDT revenues by community at this time. However, a scan by staff revealed, for instance, Tofino, the MRDT, a portion of the general MRDT was used for a wastewater treatment plant debt servicing and was recently approved in 2023 to 2027. And 0.8% was used towards a new visitor center capital project. And the OAP portion of MRDT was used for affordable housing project. That is one example of a jurisdiction using MRDT for a variety of purposes. Penticton also, OAP revenues are directed for affordable housing. And Richmond as well, and Revelstoke, for instance. So council requested additional information concerning the use of MRDT for the purpose of affordable housing. To date, the district has not elected to apply OAP revenues towards affordable housing. OAP revenues have averaged $100,000 over the three full years of reporting available between 2019 and 2022. Following the onset of new short-term rental regulations, OAP revenue significantly decreased. But a rebound is being experienced, and that rebound is related to increases in average daily rates by accommodation providers. Should the district wish to use OAP MRDT revenues for housing initiatives, there is not a requirement to do this as part of the five-year application or renewal process. Instead, the Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing must be consulted prior to the implementation of housing initiatives, and details must be included with the annual tactical plan, which is due on November 30th of each year. In terms of considerations related to the provision of MRDT to Tourism Squamish Society, all proceeds from MRDT, general and OAP are provided to Tourism Squamish Society by the district as a flow-through for the purposes of tourism marketing programs and services. Tourism Squamish relies on both general and OAP MRDT revenue for its strategic operations. And also, another consideration is that the province requires that communities identify investment in the tourism sector outside of MRDT funding in order to be eligible to receive MRDT funding. And the province requires a five-year strategic plan to be submitted as part of the MRTT application package. Tourism Squamish has outlined the goals included on the right-hand side of the slide and also as part of the report package. Another request that Tourism Squamish has made, which is reflected in the motions to counsel, is that Tourism Squamish be made the designated recipient of MRDT. Currently, the designated recipient is the District of Squamish. And this is in order to expedite funds to Tourism Squamish Society from the MRDT program. So as such, staff proposed the following council resolutions. Through our pause. Thank you.
Counsel, any questions? I'm looking at you, Counsel Penningill. Go ahead.
Yeah, thanks. A couple things, just on one of the more recent points. As a district, we need to invest in tourism so that we can capture and hold on to a part of the MRDT, or does that, is that what allows anyone, including Tourism Squamish, to collect the MRDT?
Through the chair, to clarify, it allows anyone to receive the MRDT funding. There is a requirement that the community demonstrates tourism sector investment. And when asked, when we ask the program manager, what does that mean? Can that be in kind? That generally know they are looking for cash investment in the tourism sector. But they couldn't clarify how much.
So to clarify, if as a community, we weren't making that investment, then even Tourism Squamish could not collect MRDT. Is that accurate?
Yes, that's accurate. Through the chair, yes, that's accurate.
Okay, thank you. That's helpful. The other piece, just trying to understand, so if the district is wishing to use part of the MRDT for affordable housing, that sort of thing, that needs to be enshrined at the start of the five-year agreement? Is that correct?
Through the chair, only if the district would want to use general MRDT revenues would it be required to be part of a five-year application process. If the district wants to use the OAP portion for the purpose of affordable housing, then it can be part of the annual tactical plan submission, which occurs, which is due by November 30th.
Okay, thank you. And then if Tourism Squamish, if we proceed with this resolution, so Tourism Squamish is taking all the MRDT, is there any restrictions on Tourism Squamish doing sector-focused employee housing or that sort of thing without district sort of managing it? If it's the DMO doing it?
Through the chair, Tourism Squamish, as part of its application for MRDT, outlines its five-year strategic plan. It would likely need to include consideration for affordable housing programs as part of that five-year strategic plan. That update can be also made at the tactical annual plan preparation due November 30th.
Mayor Hereford, followed by Counsel Stoner.
Thank you. My first question was around what constituted that local government support. So I wish we had more details too. I was just trying to understand how close we were to that line unknowingly in our prior discussion. But I accept the answer given. The, I was curious, a lot of time in the presentation was around this OAP portion and the opportunity that that represents on the affordable housing front. I was just curious why the staff recommendation wasn't to pursue that yet? It was weighed so heavily in the presentation. These two things seem, don't quite align for me.
Through the chair, there was a request by council for more information about use of OAP funds for affordable housing. Therefore, the report included that information. At this time, staff are not recommending that OAP be used for affordable housing as there's been no formal conversation entered with Tourism Squamish about use of funds for affordable housing programs or the direction of those funds for affordable housing programs. So should council direct staff to pursue use of OAP funds or explore use of OAP funds for affordable housing, we would like to engage our tourism partner, Tourism Squamish, first. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Stoner?
Thank you. Through the chair, just to pick up on that thread. So from your perspective, Ms. Halligan, the next steps for that formal conversation would be to direct staff to have that conversation with Tourism Squamish. Is that correct?
Through the chair, yes, that is correct.
Okay, great. And then in terms of also sequencing of events here, the request is for Tourism Squamish to be able to receive the MRDT tax directly. Does that impact or would that change if we, after our future conversations, decide that some of that OAP funding should be going to affordable housing? Does that get complicated if it's no longer flowing through the district?
Through the chair, I don't believe that it'll get complicated. I think once you update the tactical plan, that there'll be use of funds for affordable housing, then we can figure out how to address the collection of OAP funds and whether or not that should still go to the designated recipient, Tourism Squamish, or if a portion gets directed back to the district.
Got it. Thank you. And then one final question. In Table 2 in the staff report on this topic, it's the annual MRDT overview. And it seems like the MRDT revenue has jumped quite significantly in this past year, mostly driven by fixed roof accommodation providers, of which we don't actually have more of, from what I understand. So I'm guessing that that's a result of increased prices. And I just want to make sure that that's where that shift has come from.
Through the chair, that is correct. We've actually had a contraction of fixed roof accommodation within the district with the loss of certain properties. So therefore, the average daily rate is what's actually been pushing the increase in MRDT collected.
Thank you for clarifying. That's it, Chair.
Counsel Penningill?
Thanks. Counselor Stoner's question about Table 2 reminded me I also had a question. If I understand the table correctly, in 2022, 13 online accommodation providers were remitting MRDT. I think our Airbnb, or sorry, our short-term rental regulations allow for 30 licenses and then in, depending on your configuration, you can have additional licenses. Is that something separate? Or I guess I'm expecting a much higher number than 13. Are people avoiding the tax or...
Through the chair, definitely two different things. So the number of properties remitting are both OAP properties and, so it's the marketplace. So for instance, Airbnb would be considered a marketplace, so that would be a count of one, which represents a number of properties. And then the actual fixed roof accommodation providers here located within the district. So it's two different numbers, STRs are the individual property, properties.
Any other questions, Counsel? So it looks like we're treating these two motions, we're going to handle them together. Is that correct? Separate, okay. That's despite the "and", that's at the end of... So just for context, what we see on the screen is a little different from what we have in our package. So the recommendation from staff is that a letter of support be provided to Tourism Squamish Society for their municipal and regional district tax application. Moved by Counselor Hamilton, seconded by Counselor Anderson. Is there any discussion, Counsel? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Are there any opposed? No opposed. Motion passes unanimous. And next, we have a staff recommendation that council consider first three readings of the District of Squamish Additional Hotel Room Tax Levy Bylaw Number 2580-2017, Amendment Bylaw 2954-2023, at the Special Business Meeting, January 24th, 2023. Or is that... Tonight, so it is 2023, not 2024. Oh, okay.
The date for...
Very good. Okay, so we're all clear on that. Do I have a mover? Moved by Mayor Hereford and seconded by Counselor Hamilton. Any comments, Counsel? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? And motion passes unanimous. Counsel Stoner?
I'd like to put another motion on the floor for council consideration.
Okay, very good. I saw Counsel Mayor Hereford's hand. Is there something you'd like to squeeze in before we do that?
That was my intent as well, so I'll let my colleague take a swing at it, and I think we may be aligned here.
That staff be directed to engage in formal discussions with Tourism Squamish and the Squamish Community Housing Society about allocating OAP MRDT funding to affordable housing. And I will email that too.
Okay, great. And that's seconded by Mayor Hereford?
I have a friendly amendment, hopefully, with, for potential inclusion in the upcoming update in November this year, to put a timeline on to this movement. Is that okay with the...
Yeah, that's okay. So we'll add at the end of the motion for consideration by the November 30th tactical plan update.
Okay, so you've got all that? Excellent. Counsel Stoner?
Thank you. Speaking of the motion, appreciate the additional information. I think that this is an important conversation for us to have with our partners. I don't want to presuppose the outcomes, but I do think this affordable, sorry, the Squamish Community Housing Society should be part of the conversation because they're trying to do some business planning right now around what that entity will look like in the long term. And I think especially with the rise of the OAP funding, and we know that the impact of the lack of affordable housing in our community is impacting especially our tourism operators, as well as businesses more broadly, that this conversation needs to happen. And it should be done with our partners around the table before we make any decisions. So happy to leave that with staff and hear what the results are at a later date. Thanks.
Mayor Hereford?
Thank you. I'm supporting this motion. I think the, I recognize that the short-term rental accommodation isn't the be-all, end-all for either the tourism accommodation nor the affordable housing piece. And those, and it's incredibly challenging to sort of work in that, in that space because there is a push and pull. And I think that... that exploring this, this opportunity is, is absolutely worthwhile venture to sort of add another dimension to the, to the equation as we go about consideration of how those short-term rentals are handled as a, as a community. So I look forward to that discussion and, and, and thank you for the presentations today. Thank you.
Counselor Penningill?
Thanks. Maybe just being too much of a stickler for clarity, but I just want to clarify that the intent is for a discussion on the sort of pros and cons of affording, of funding affordable housing through the OAP. Possibly it's not to come back with a plan to do so in November.
That's correct. Or that's my understanding. Any other comments? Okay, I'll add one final comment of my own. I'm speaking in favor of the motion, as I think that any opportunity we can take to support our new housing society, at minimum, we should look at it, and that's exactly what we're doing here. I'll call the question. All those in favor? Motion carries unanimous. Thank you very much. And Council, we will now recess and then return to a closed session at 1:30. Mayor Herrford?
I was just going to move motion to close to simplify things.
So I have a motion from Mayor Herrford to close, seconded by Counselor Penningill. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Motion carries unanimous. And we will recess until 1:30. Recess and reconvene in a separate link. Good afternoon and welcome back to our Committee of the Home meeting. Somebody has audio open.
Somebody from that.
Counselor? Okay, I think it might have been resolved. Yay. Okay, Committee of the Home meeting. This is the afternoon portion. For those who are just joining us, my name is Counselor John French. I am the acting mayor for the month of January, so I'm chairing the meeting this afternoon. It's my honor to do so. And I'm very happy to have the, some representative of the Squamish Youth Council joining us. And I'm simply going to turn it over to you at this point.
Thank you so much, John. First of all, we want to say thank you so much for having us here. It's truly a pleasure, and we're hoping that you're all having a great afternoon. My name is Caitlin Jewell. I am a grade 12 student at Rockridge Secondary School in West Vancouver. I go by the pronoun she/her.
And I'm Marley Mastinsek. I'm a fifth-year student at Quest University. I also use she/her pronouns.
And I'm Sophia Perry. I'm a grade 12 student at How Sound in Squamish, and I also use she/her pronouns.
Perfect. So now we're going to dive a little bit into Squamish Youth Council. Next slide, please. Perfect. So who we are. Squamish Youth Council is truly made of passionate and inspiring youth. In fact, there are 13 of us here on the team. Unfortunately, only three of us could come today because there are finals happening within the How Sound district, but it's a pleasure to be here. We're a group of youth committed to creating change within our Squamish community, as well as dedicating our time and resources to improving and amplifying the voices of Squamish. Next slide, please. Yes, lovely. So let's give some context behind Squamish Youth Council. It originally started with a program called Youth Strategies, implemented since 2019 with a goal to make and plan to promote healthy, happy, and engaged lifestyles for youth. And that graduated in 2021 into Squamish Youth Council with the development of the council, obviously, with the goal to put the youth strategy into action. And so many of our goals and focuses are developed from this youth strategy. So let's talk a little bit about our mission and vision. Our mission is to engage youth and enter partnerships to expand facilities, programs, transportation, housing services for youth in inclusive and affordable means. And so you'll see a lot of this mission, as well as this vision reflected in the problems that we have chosen to tackle as part of the Squamish Youth Council, which Marley and Sophia will both talk about a little bit later. And our vision is to see Squamish youth thrive to their highest potential and be happy, healthy, and engaged community members. So our values. Squamish Youth Council really encompasses six main values, those being youth-focused programming, partnerships, amplifying youth voices, developing wellness, promoting arts and culture within the Squamish community, and advocating for climate change.
Awesome. Thank you, Caitlin. So looking back at 2022, or our last term, which is not in the calendar year, it's 2021 to 2022, we learned a lot of lessons. We had two major events. We reached about 150 youth, and we only spent a few thousand dollars of our $25,000 budget. And so some of the lessons we learned after last year was that we were really busy, and it was hard to be efficient with our time. And so this year, we want to be more productive and structured in our meetings, so we can be more efficient with our budget. We also learned that it's beneficial for us to collaborate with other organizations that have planning experience to increase our efficiency. And additionally, a lot of people actually wanted our opinion. So this year, our goal, flex slide, please. Our goals are about, can be boiled down into four points. We wanted to engage a larger audience of youth and adults. And we also wanted to utilize those community partners that we had talked about with planning experience to increase our efficiency. We wanted to increase our community connections, so making people aware that we're here and we're working towards bettering youth lives. And also, we wanted to ensure that we use as much of the budget as possible, but in a responsible and meaningful way. So next slide, please. So that brings us to our idea for our event. It is called Bear's Den, namely fitting for Squamish. And what this event is, is a grant kind of application event. And so any local nonprofit of Squamish can apply for a $10,000 grant with the intention that they spend that money on any youth-focused or driven programming or opportunity. And so how this event will work is any local nonprofit can apply online through the link that's live. And then the Youth Council will decide on a top five finalists based off of a criteria that we will decide at our next meeting. And then, next slide, please, Tori. Thank you. We'll host our live event on Thursday, April 13th, where those five finalists will come and present live to an audience of 100, about 100 folks, meet both youth and adults if they wish to come, and also the Youth Council. So our five finalists will present, and then we will all in the audience vote live. And the decision will be made right then and there, and we will present the winner from this event with the $10,000 check to go forward with their initiative. So as I said, the applications are live. They went live yesterday, and they close on the 16th of February. You can see on the slide some of our promotional material. Next slide, please. And so why are we doing this event? A question we had to ask ourselves before we went forward with it. Our goal is obviously always to make youth-focused initiatives and programming, and so this event checks that box. Additionally, it increases our connection between youth and community, because we're working with community partners, we're working with local nonprofits. And we're also inviting the community into the decision-making. So we're amplifying those youth voices, which is part of our mission, vision, and values. And so the youth actually get a direct voice into what happens for them. They have, this also has the potential to reach a larger audience because more people are going to be involved in the decision, and we're also going to be working with a local nonprofit that likely already has an audience. So again, increasing that community connection, which was one of our goals for the year. And with that, I'll pass it on to Sophia.
So out of our $25,000 budget, we've kind of split it up to give us more structure and figure out how we want to spend our money this year. We've put aside $10,000 for the main Bear's Den award. And then 2,000 would also go to the event itself, so expenses such as catering and just anything else we need for that. We also considered the idea of doing micro grants, so these would be a few smaller grants that could go to other groups or organizations. But this is something that we're still considering just because of time constraints and the planning that would go into that. And then the other $3,000 would go to other events that we might run this year. Next slide, please. We do anticipate that there will be some questions that come up throughout this process. One of those being, what if we don't get enough applications? We do have quite a few community partners that we've reached out to, but this is something that we will figure out if it comes to that. We're still deciding the voting process, so at our next meeting, we'll be discussing how much the audience will have, like, in the wait for the decision compared to Youth Council. And we're, we'll also be deciding our criteria. So we're going to be making a scoring sheet and deciding how that will all work at our February meeting. And the time constraint is something that we have overcome by making a list of action items. Next slide, please. So as you can see, a couple of things have already been put into place. The applications went live yesterday, as Marley said. And we began advertising through social media, and the Squamish chief actually just wrote an article regarding the Bear's Den. And then we'll continue to follow these action items as we move closer to the event. Next slide, please. We also need your help in promoting this event, so if you could all amplify our message with your community networks, and this could involve approaching them through email or inviting them to apply. Also, by following Squamish Youth Council on Instagram, we post a lot of helpful deadlines and information regarding the event, so that's a good thing to be aware of. And we are also very open to questions and feedback, because it's our first time doing an event like this, and we want to make sure that we do it right. And thank you.
Council, any questions? Counselor Anderson?
I wonder if the Youth Council has considered, in addition to or alongside, or perhaps for the future, as an alternative or a complement to allocating dollars, to allocate volunteer time to a community project or cause? Is that, is that, is that a prospect, or has that been discussed by your group?
It's something we haven't explicitly discussed. I think it's a great idea, and I think part of the intention of doing this, this, this event is that whoever does receive the funding, we are all there to support them anyways, because we are financially supporting, but also we're supported by, you know, just being part of it. We are all youth ourselves, and so I think it's kind of given that we'll be either there, or if they need youth volunteers, that we will be part of it. But we'll be, we'll be sure to mention that to Council at our, our Youth Council at the next meeting. I think that's a great idea. Thank you.
Counselor Stoner?
Thank you. Through the Chair, thanks for coming in for the presentation. I love the idea of the Bear's Den. I also like the graphics. It's got me very excited. Well, Instagram after this meeting. Guess not to do it while I'm sitting in this chair. I also think it's super interesting, the process. I was on a webinar last week about community-based participatory budgeting, which is a really dry way of saying what it is exactly that you are doing. It's how you engage the people that will be impacted by the money to have a voice and how that money gets spent. So I think that it's really, really innovative and novel, the idea that you've brought forward, that it will engage a broader section of the youth demographic, hopefully, in trying to figure out how you can amplify that money that you have. So I think that's great. One question that jumped out at me was just on the reporting of the grant deliverables. So part of the thing that is important as, as Council, and as we talk about budget and public money, is where are the accountability factors? And so part of that is with Youth Council, we get you to come back and report back on what you're doing. Have you thought about that at all in terms of the grants that you would be giving out through the Bear's Den?
Through the Chair, yes, that's a lovely question that the Youth Council has actually begun discussing, especially in consideration of our micro grants. So logistically, if we were to do micro grants, we were not only considering how that application process would proceed, but how would we check in on the organizations or nonprofits that we are giving these micro grants to? And so the Youth Council does recognize this financial responsibility that does come out with giving money out to the public, and is definitely something that we are going to be actively reporting on in, I want to say, near our end of term, so around May-June area.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Let's also, sorry to add on to that. We do have a, in our, in our action plan, we have in November that whoever receives the grant will actually come and report to next year's Council and tell them what they did, how it went, and kind of give us a report on whether the event was worth it or not.
Council? Counselor Hamilton? And then I'll put myself on the list if nobody, okay, yeah.
Thank you very much. That's, I absolutely enjoy the graphics of the bear. Is there, so the Youth Council, it has a, it faces a challenge, because you renew every year, right? You've got new memberships, so it's hard to take your experience from one year to the other. Is there anything that Council can do, who sits here for longer, that could perhaps help the Youth Council transition from one year to the next? Is there anything we can do for you in your transition for next year?
Through the Chair. I can't think of anything off the top of my head, and I don't think that either of my co-presenters have ideas either. But it's something we can definitely propose to Council, especially at like our yearly wrap-up at the end of the calendar, not the calendar year, the school year. Because I think right now the, the connections between Council and Youth Council are a little gray. How do we work together? It's, it's kind of there, but not fully. So thanks for proposing that, Counselor Hamilton.
Counselor Penningill?
Yeah, thanks. I don't have a question, just, just a comment. A few years ago, or a few, few years ago, as part of a Dragon's Den event, as part of another nonprofit in town with Inside Edge and Pearls, and doing some IT work and branding and so on, and it was just a fantastic, really fun event, bringing the community together. I think the Cloud was involved in that, and so from experience, it hit on a lot of the points that you're trying to hit. And so really happy to hear that you're doing this and excited to see how it turns out. So thank you for taking this on.
Maybe I missed it in the presentation. The Bear's Den on April the 13th, which is a Thursday from 6:30 to 8:30, did your slide include the venue?
Through the Chair, it'll be at Eagle Eye Theater at How Sound Secondary.
Okay, great. And I have one more question. I think a little bit along the lines of what where Counselor Hamilton was going with the continuity for Youth Council. The struggle is real of institutional memory. The group turns over regularly. So I wonder if I could put the three of you on the spot and share with us one or two things that you've gotten out of participating in the Youth Council, a benefit, something that has, has worked well for you out of your participation.
Wonderful question, Counselor French. As I've kind of already described to you before, I am a student that goes to school in West Vancouver, and so I find that Squamish Youth Council in particular has brought me, brought me very much more closer to my Squamish community and connect with Squamish youth. And so just to feel that leadership and that part of my community that I desperately, like, I enjoy and wish to see thrive, is truly an amazing opportunity that the SYC has given to me.
Great, I'll go next. I think we're all going to go, which is good. For me personally, Youth Council has given me the opportunity to be more engaged in the political stage of Squamish. I don't think it's forced upon us, but it's something that I've been more inspired to do. It's been really beneficial for my growth as a student and as a person to like, get to be able to speak with Mayor Herrford and at least one of you every single month. And just like, I'm making so many more connections in the community, and I feel similar to Caitlin, closer to the community by being part of SYC. And yeah, I think that, I think that sums up my experience.
Similar to what Caitlin said. Similar to what Caitlin said, a lot of us on Squamish Youth Council go to different schools. So it's been a great opportunity to collaborate with new people. And I'm, I've also become more aware of some of the issues youth face in Squamish. And I'm really lucky to play a part in improving those struggles for some.
Great. Thank you. Mayor Hereford?
Thank you. I was waiting till the end, till everyone had gone, because I have the pleasure of working with the, the youth council as, as part of my responsibilities as, as mayor. So thank you so much for coming and presenting today. I think it's, it's great and it's good to, to see the, sort of the con, the concepts starting to crystallize even from our, from our last meeting, which wasn't that long ago. So things are moving quickly, and I think that's, that's great. I did want to address, there's some, that, the reporting piece that was raised, raised around the table as well as the, sort of that, that continuity. And right at, at this point, youth council does cover quite a range of ages. So we do have people returning, which, which helps over time. And as well as, as at this point, the, myself being through that and, and our facilitator as well through that and staff. So there's, there's an eye toward, towards that. And currently, the acting mayor has come with every, every month. And of course, the youth council doesn't run all year, but you know, so most people, I think everybody will, will get there. And, and after our council does strategic planning process and so on, and this youth council runs sort of the course through the school year, one of the discussions we'll be having is whether we appoint someone as well as the mayor to that permanently, or if we continue with the rotation. And there's a couple of different ways to handle that. So, and I, I, I know then in my time as, as a councillor, I really enjoyed the acting mayor duties and getting to come to, to youth council. So I want to ensure that we still have that somehow. So some things to do on, on our end to make that, that work well. And I'm, I'm really excited to see these plans advancing. And, and I'm very excited for the Bear Den's event, as well as the, seeing whatever the initiative, initiative is that's, that ends up coming out on top, implemented and, and having that impact. And yeah, thank you so much for your work.
Council, any final questions?
Sorry, I thought I saw Christine.
You could pull up a chair to the end of the table there, and we'll find a microphone for you.
Thank you. Through the chair, I just wanted to add a, just a comment just around the continuity as well. I think there's a couple of things in place. I think having myself as a facilitator year over year, I think brings some of that continuity. I think as the second year of council, what we're seeing already is that they're building on the structure and the things that worked well last year. So eventually, the more that we do this, the more it will become actually a little bit more of a program with boundaries. I don't want to call it super structured because the councillors each year may have different priorities, but the actual sort of structure of this is what we do in the first month and the second month and the third month, that will become easier to follow. So it'll be easier for people to step in, I think, that are new. And this year, we have about 30% of our youth council members that are returning. So originally, when we designed it, we designed two-year terms and one-year terms. But we actually thought it would be a, you know, that, that councillors might not want to sign up for something for two years. And what we instead did is we signed everybody up for one-year terms and then offered people the opportunity to reapply if they wanted for a maximum of two years. So I think that creates, just that 30% kind of creates enough memory, but without it being rigid, because if you have too many, then the new people come in and say, you know, this is what we want to do. And then the old councillors say, well, no, this is what we do. So I think it's a bit of a balance, but I think as we grow, we'll figure it out together.
Great. Thank you. Council, I think we could close this out with a motion to receive the report from the youth council. Moved by councillor Greenlaw and seconded by Mayor Hereford. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? And the motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much for joining us this afternoon. And so that just, oh, Mayor Hereford? Okay, you're just, so the two of you once again are trying to get ahead of the chair. So Mayor Hereford is moving the staff recommendation that the meeting be terminated, seconded by councillor Stoner. I'll call the question. All those in favor? And the motion passes unanimously. We will be back here at 6 o'clock this evening for a special meeting tonight. Thank you.